Thank you very much. Welcome to the Wichita Public Schools School Board Meeting for February the 13th. We had a little problem with connecting to our outside world with our live presentation, so that has been fixed and we will begin our board meeting now. Thank you very much for the audience for being here. This is great to see all of you here, and thank you to the audience that's viewing us on our television channel and in other ways through social media. The Wichita Public Schools will be the district of choice in our region where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Our pledge of allegiance in the presentation of our colors are done by South High Schools' JROTC tonight, Lieutenant Colonel Alexander Ritchie, Private Adrian Booth, Private Shawn Smith, and Private Clayton McPherson. Please rise for the presentation of the colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
You may be seated. Please join me in thanking our South High cadets.
First item, Superintendent's Student Advisory Council.
We're glad to have you here tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Mejia, senior at Wichita South High School. Today I will be presenting to you all our recap of our previous Supersac meeting. In our previous Supersac meeting, we re-looked at data from our first Super-Super-Sac meeting back in November. The main topic that we touched based on is how we can improve on informing and engaging both students and parents with different opportunities that Wichita Public Schools offers for post-high school education. We were split up into four communication consultant groups, which were Better Outreach, Messaging Plus, Market Enhancing, and Can You Hear Me Consulting. Our Better Outreach is discussed on how we can better reach the students and parents about these opportunities that were offered by Wichita Public Schools. What this group came up with is that we should be targeting platforms especially used by both parents and students to demonstrate the different opportunities that we offer within our district to help them within their high school education, but also when they're off in college. They also mentioned how making more accessible links can be, that can be used more than just on computers such as mobile devices to make sure that this information on websites is more accessible for parents and students. Our next group, which was our Messaging Plus Consulting Team, discussed what messages need to be delivered, delivered to our audience. They thought that making post-high school opportunities a higher priority was the most important to focus on. They also thought that this was the most important part because it would give the opportunities to our high school graduates on how to get a good stable job with some of the leading industries that we have here in the city. Our Marketing Enhancing Team worked on how to increase the marketability of a Wichita Public School graduate. In regards to this, we thought having people who volunteered to create a video or a post on how their Wichita Public Schools experience was, and having the adults in their lives such as teachers, parents, paras, different adult figures within their high school journeys, how they impacted them, and how their journey was difficult, the good and the bad of their high school experience. With these stories, we hope to bring people of different diversities and different life situations. Our Can You Hear Me Consulting Team talks about how the experiences you have in high school will make you college, career, and life ready, and how to teach them that. They thought that employers and colleges and our middle school students and parents should be talked about what we offer, such as internship opportunities after high school for mainly our middle school students who are transferring from eighth grade to high school, how they should be offered different shadowing opportunities within the high school, also different extracurriculars such as Avid and IB programs, and not only expanding on what their base school has, but what all of our different high schools within the district have. In order to get this information to both parents and students, we thought that presenting at assemblies, sending out emails, and info videos to parents and students would be a great way to reach this. It is my pleasure to be presenting on behalf of my Supersac peers. If you guys have any questions, I would be more than happy to answer them.
I'm seeing no que-- oh, yes, I do. Ernestine.
You said having some videos to send home to the parents. Would the students make the videos, or would we do it in coordination with the communications people? Who would make those videos that we would, I presume, we'd like send it to through social media?
Well, we were thinking students who are currently on track, or seniors who are going to graduate this year, or students who have already graduated can be called back to their high school and made a video where they can either edit it there, or we can send it to our communications team within the district to pub, to make those accessible to the public.
Great idea. Thanks.
Thank you very much. It's not easy to come down and talk to us, and you did a great job. Thank you very much. Next item, Patrick.
Next item, public hearing on Construction Manager at Risk Delivery Method Project.
This is an item that is on our agenda, and we have advertised it publicly, and we've asked for people to speak, and it's my understanding no one has signed up. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So we will close the hearing for the Construction Manager at Risk Delivery Model. Next item, Patrick.
Next item, under Reports, Good News.
Good evening, President Logan, Vice President Albert. I have to get that rolling off my tongue as our new officers have changed, Superintendent Thompson and members of the board. Melissa was being pretty, pretty humble as she talked about a really amazing discussion with Supersac, and I will tell you, I think we're going to try to get the best of both worlds because there were six students that said they were interested in talking more with us, potentially working with us on internships, to not only talk about the work and advise us on the work, but to create the work as part of our Strategic Communications Team. So we're going to continue to work that project and see how we can bring all the creative ideas together this spring, and then engage students in the summer and perhaps in the fall if an internship during the school year works out. We learned pretty quickly from the students that if our social media habits are on Facebook, perhaps Twitter, that we're old, and that we need to be thinking about Snapchat and Instagram and other tools that young people are more engaged in. It was also, it was also an eye-opener to think about their advice that videos that students will watch as we consider how to expose college and career opportunities, CTE opportunities, great things that we have available for students. Videos are between 15 and 30 seconds, and if you don't spend time thinking about creation in that kind of format, it may not scare you as much as it scares those of us who do think in those realms. So Melissa and her peers on Supersac are just really extraordinary young people, and we're lucky to have them advocating for their peers and being part of the Superintendent's Advisory Council to share feedback. We also have an opportunity tonight to honor two student groups and one of the adults that is so committed to supporting those students. First of all, Battle of the Books, and as an added bonus, you get to learn about the Big Read and the new reading selection. I know that several of you took the time to join us in the studio and witnessed Battle of the Books firsthand, so here to tell you more about the winners, the books read, all the really cool things that happened in Battle of the Books is Gail Becker, who leads our Library Media Services area, and then after she introduces you to our students, she will also give you the first tip on the Big Read.
That way the cameras can see your faces instead of your back.
Oh, I thought it might be the other way.
Does that work?
Okay. Okay, well, good evening, President Logan, Vice President Albert, board members, Dr. Thompson. Library Media and Textbook Services is happy to report we just completed our 28th Annual Battle of the Books Competition, which was held January 19th through the 25th. Forty-four schools participated this year, and the competitions are recorded and posted on the WPS TV website and can be viewed throughout the year. It was great to see so many of you pop into the studio and get to meet our students while they were there. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank Andrea Brainard, Library Media Instructional Support, she's here waving, for organizing and directing this year's Battle of the Books competitions. We'd also like to recognize and thank Media Productions for producing the programs. They do a fabulous job every year, and we just really love working with them. I'd also like to give a special shout-out to Dr. Thompson, who was one of our guest hosts this year, and we're just so grateful for all the guest hosts from our local media outlets who share their skills and experience with working in a live broadcast, which can be a little scary sometimes. I also want to share with you a quote from one of the coaches from one of our winning teams. In a follow-up email, she wrote that one of her students said, "This is the best thing that ever happened to me." I added that voice, but you can read that in the email. The coach went on to say that she loved that they had had this moment that they could look back on that would give them confidence to try the next hard thing, or new hard things that they would come to. She said these students commented before the competition that even if they didn't get any answers right, they were still glad they had time together and were thankful for the friendships that were formed. Battle of the Books gives our elementary students the opportunity to commit to a goal and work with a team to accomplish it. So tonight, we have three teams with us who excelled at the district competition, and we want to recognize them now. The teams are from Earhart, McLean, and College Hill. These students worked with their librarians for months, reading, memorizing titles and authors, and preparing book talks. So the Battle of the Books teams from Earhart, McLean, both scored a perfect round in their course of their competition. And that means that they answered all 10 questions correctly that were given to them and knew all the authors. So I'm going to call out their names, and their librarian will hand them a certificate. So for Earhart, the librarian extraordinaire is Lori Moore, and her team members are Abigail Hux, Paxton Philippi, Rhett Blyer, and Keniel Umarie. And our other team that had a perfect round is from McLean, and their librarian is Tina Qualls, and her team members are Zaylee Carr, Luca Dolzo, Ella Garnsey, and Micah Kelderman. The team from College Hill is here to be recognized because they earned the highest score in a round out of all 44 teams who competed. And their librarian is Shawna Wagner, and her team members are Allison Ward, Izzy Steed, Ruby Steed, and Mila Sineno. All right, thank you.
You worked hard, and it shows. Thank you so much.
And while I'm here, I'm going to kind of do a little double duty. We did Battle of the Books, and now we're going to take, kind of turn a corner and talk about Big Read. This is the 15th year that Wichita Public Schools has been a partner of this event. The selection chosen this year is Can't We Talk About Something More Pleasant by Roz Chass, and there's a copy of that on your table. This is a memoir that celebrates the final years of the author's aging parents' lives through cartoons, family photos, and documents that reflect the struggles and challenges of a caregiver. And the Big Read kickoff is Sunday, March 12th at 2:00 PM at the Advanced Learning Library. If you're able to make it, that would be a fun time as we kick off Big Read. And in your book that, that we gave you, there's also a flyer with companion titles. So we always have companion titles for all levels, and the district provides those to the schools appropriate for those levels. So middle school receives a copy of Rebound by Kwame Alexander. The intermediate grades received Mercy Suarez Changes Gears by Meg Medina. Primary students will, those schools will receive Let Me Fix Your Plate by Elizabeth Lilly, and preschool, I'll Hold Your Hand by Maggie Rudd. So get excited for Big Read. It's coming. Thank you. Did anybody have any questions? Any questions, comments? All right.
Great job. Thank you.
We have another group of creative students that you have the chance to celebrate this evening. The annual Scholastic Art and Writing Awards have been bestowed on an increased number of students. Mr. Chastain, our Executive Coordinator of Fine Arts, told me I could not give you a number because it has gone up since the agenda was printed. So this is, I love the creative spirit that our students show and the opportunities they have to earn scholarships and show their work at Mark Arts as it is being done now. So without further ado, to introduce you to these amazing creative young people is Mr. Shawn Chastain.
Good evening, everyone, and before proceeding, I would like to invite any student or teacher representing tonight's Scholastic Art Awards, if you haven't joined us down front, to come on down, and I also want to invite everyone to view our district's award-winning Scholastic Student artwork on the screens. I also want to thank Marsha Skirfield, WPS Visual Arts Curriculum Specialist, for joining me and for organizing tonight's slideshow. Thanks also to our WPS Visual Arts faculty who submitted these beautiful digital images, and especially to those in attendance tonight. With us from Allison Middle School, we have Jennifer Lee. From East High School, we have Molly Williams. From North High School, we have Nikki Baird, Olivia Roscoe, and Tina Thomas. From Northeast Magnet, Meredith Radke-Gannon. And from Northwest, Andrea Corcoran. How about a round for our teachers with us tonight and representing the excellent instruction received by our faculty. Thank you, teachers. The Scholastic Art and Writing Awards is the oldest and most prestigious recognition program for creative teenagers in the United States. Each work is reviewed by a panel of arts professionals for originality, technical skill, and an emergence of professional vision and voice. This year, approximately 1,600 individual submissions from 70 Kansas counties were submitted for the Eastern Kansas Scholastic Art Awards. Of those 1,600 entries, 428 student works were selected for the show. Of those 428 works selected, and our number has risen, to 131 entries from the Wichita Public Schools. Our award-winning artwork, you're going to clap again when I give you the statistic. Our award-winning artwork represents 89 student artists guided by 23 visual arts instructors from 10 WPS secondary schools, and for the second year in a row, all of our WPS high schools were represented along with two middle schools. This year's district-winning categories include Honorable Mention, Silver Key, Gold Key, and American Vision nominees. So percentage-wise, over 30% of those 70-county Eastern Kansas Scholastic Award winners are not just from Centric County, they're from the Wichita Public Schools. So thank you for helping me celebrate that statistic. While we have an upfront look at these award-winning students and faculty, we would also like to recognize any parents, family members, and administrators of these students that are with us tonight in the audience. Parents, administrators, family members, I would invite you to stand or wave as we give thanks for your continued support of these talented students. And finally, as we did recently with our banner winners, I want to thank these award-winning student artists for joining us this evening, and I would like, and we know this is their favorite part of the program, is to briefly introduce themselves to everyone by simply sharing their name, their grade, their school, and their award. So artists, come on up, and we'll get started quickly, and as you get done, you could circle back around.
My name is Sudra Siddiqui. I am in 12th grade. I attend East High School, and my Scholastic Award was a Gold Key.
Hi, my name is Miriam Lesman. I'm a 10th grader at East High, and I won a Silver Key and Honorable Mention.
Hi, my name's Lily Yaki. I'm a freshman at Southeast High School, and I got an Honorable Mention.
Hi, my name is Susannah Jacobs. I'm a senior at Southeast High School, and I got a Gold Key.
Hello, my name is Marina. I am in 10th grade. I go to North High School, and I got a Honorable Mention.
Hello, my name is Daily Green. I'm in 10th grade. I attend North High School, and I got a Silver Key.
Hi, my name is Joanna Romero. I'm in 10th grade, and I go to North High School, and I won an Honorable Mention.
Hi, my name is Hannah Zoner. I'm in grade 11. I go to North High, and I won a Silver Key.
My name is Jayden Lansdowne Vaughn. I am in 11th grade at Northwest, and I won a Gold Key and an Honorable Mention.
Hi, my name is Trinity Pham. I'm in 10th grade. I go to Northwest High School, and I got a Gold Key.
My name is Valen Huber. I'm a junior in East High, and I got a Gold Key for my photo princess.
My name is Frankie Silva. I'm in the 11th grade. I go to North High School, and I won a Silver Key and two Honorable Mentions.
My name is Ava Williams. I'm in 11th grade. I go to North High, and I won an Honorable Mention.
My name is Madeline Claussen. I'm 12th grade. I go to North High School, and I got a Gold Key and American Vision nominee.
Hello, my name is Mariana Yen. I'm a junior, and I attend Wichita East High School, and I won a Gold Key.
Hello, my name is Addie Stewart. I'm in 8th grade. I go to Allison Middle School, and I won a Gold Key.
My name is Arzlet Termontes. I'm in grade 9. I go to North High, and I won a Gold Key.
My name is Lily Cardenas. I'm in grade 10. I go to North High School, and I won two Honorable Mentions.
My name is Alvin. I'm in 9th grade. I go to North High School, won an Honorable Mention.
My name is Jeremiah. I'm in 10th grade. I go to North High School, and I won a Silver Key.
Thank you again, students, teachers, administrators, and faculty members for being with us tonight, and of course, following this Good News item, if you haven't already received, we have a wonderful certificate prepared to you from Wendy's Strategic Communications Division. And finally, many thanks to the board and district leadership for once again supporting our Wichita Public Schools' excellent representation at this year's Scholastic Art Awards. And if anyone here would like to view more of the art, it is on exhibition now at Mark Arts, 1307 North Rock Road, until March 26th. But for now, please join me in one final round of applause for these wonderful art students seen with us tonight. Thank you.
What a joy to see such talent. Thank you so much for coming down and sharing. I look forward, I try to get out to Mark Arts, and I will look forward to seeing the show this year. Thank you.
If you don't mind, we can pause just a moment to allow our kiddos to get on their way. I can't imagine they all don't want to stay around for the remainder of our board meeting. I absolutely love the opportunities that we provide our students, and we're a fortunate community to have opportunities like this for our kids to find their way in their passion. Kids don't do amazing things, though, without family units, of course, that support them, and without extraordinary teachers. So it's fitting that our final Good News item tonight allows us to honor one of those extraordinary teachers who was recently surprised. We love those surprises. Little white lies because we've got to get people to really cool spaces to be able to say thank you to them. And we were able to do that recently with Sue Ache from Gordon Parks Academy, as she was surprised with the Kansas Horizon Award, which honors new teachers for extraordinary first years in their teaching career. So here to tell you more about Ms. Ache and the award is Amanda Kingry, our Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Schools.
Well, good evening. So President Logan, I'm the same with her. It's like new people. So President Logan, Vice President Albert, Dr. Thompson, and the board. I get the great pleasure to introduce to you tonight a remarkable teacher from Gordon Parks Academy, my old stomping grounds, I'm excited to say that. But Sue Ache was first brought to you guys last year, so in 2022, when we were celebrating our distinguished classroom teacher. our distinguished classroom teacher during that time. And so, she was one of our winners last year as a first-year teacher. So, this year, we're bringing her back because she is a 2023 Kansas Horizon Award winner for this year. So, this is really exciting for us. So, the Kansas Horizon Award recognizes teachers who do an exemplary job during their first year of teaching. So, this is an award specifically for teachers in their first year. And this is awarded by the Kansas Department of Education. So, just like Wendy said earlier, Sue was surprised a little bit earlier this semester. We kinda crashed the party at an in-service, and so her family was there. Lots of district-level members were there to celebrate her. And then she also received a phone call from the Kansas Commissioner of Education, Dr. Randy Watson, to congratulate her on this honor. So, as a recipient, Sue will join the Kansas Exemplary Educators Network, also known as KINE. And KINE is a network of educators from, that's across the state. So, it allows teachers kinda to share ideas with one another, and help teachers to participate in a variety of professional development programs. And so, she's going to be recognized as well during the next KINE conference. And that's it. But we just wanna say, congratulations, Sue. We are WPS proud of you, so. Now, I'm gonna give you an opportunity, if you wanna say a few words.
So, I am beyond honored to be here. I said, when they surprised me, that there are thousands of teachers that deserve to be lifted up for all that they do. My dream started when I was a child, and then I got sid, I guess not sidetracked, but I started my own family, raised a lot of children, and decided to go back. That's why I am a Silver First and Second Year Teacher. But I knew when I was like, when I came into teaching, that my goal was to help children reach their greatest potential. What I had no idea was that what these children, the families, and my coworkers, that they were gonna help me reach my greatest potential. And I am honored to be a part of WPS. Thank you.
Sue, we are so proud of you. You represent Wichita Public Schools in the best way possible, so thank you for all your hard work. Next item.
Next item under Reports, Service Employees International.
I have not seen anybody. Next item.
Next item under Reports, United Teachers of Wichita.
Welcome. How are you, Katie?
Hi, I'm okay. Just getting back to work. I've been on medical leave for the last few weeks, so.
Well, welcome back.
Thank you. I, tonight, just wanted to talk about, we just finished up our yearly workload survey that we do. This year, we did it with Wichita State University. So, we're excited to go over those results with the district and each of you to see how to best support our wonderful teachers and staff. We have some preliminary results that we're happy to share with district leadership team sometime soon as well. Dr. Thompson, we're still in denial that you're leaving. So, and we're sad to see you go. I know that at the last meeting, we talked about the superintendent search, and that you guys voted to add in a commitment and experience working with all genders, races, and socioeconomic groups while promoting positive and inclusive student behavior conducive to a healthy and safe learning environment. I just wanna say thank you for adding that in, because we do have such a diverse district. So that, thank you for that. One of my really respected friends told me once that two things can be true at the same time. We can do great things, but still have to improve in some areas. And I just wanna say that we really appreciate you listening and working with our staff on the Behavior Work Group, so we can find out how we can improve student behavior and help our teachers and our students be the best that they can be. I hope that each of you know that despite some of our challenges, that our staff is doing great things, and our students are too. So, thank you. The next thing, there's been some voucher bills popping up in Sepica. So, I would like to encourage everyone listening to contact their legislators and remind them that public dollars belong in public schools. So, that's all I have. And congratulations. Sorry, I'm a little winded, but congratulations on becoming the new board president. Sure, Ms. Logan, and Vice President Albert, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Katie. I, I hope you're feeling better. Next item.
Next item, Public Communications.
We do have ten speakers tonight, and so I would ask that you would please honor the three minutes. There will be a timer on the bottom of the screen that will allow you to see where your time is, so please honor that. Our first speaker tonight is Dawn Kennow. And if I mispronounce your name, I apologize, but please correct it at the podium.
My name is Dawn Kennow, and I am with the Youth Educational Empowerment Program. We're an organization here in Wichita, and we have a division in our organization called the Teen View Initiative. Teen View Initiative houses Teen View Magazine. We recruit teens from middle and high schools all over Wichita, including USD two-five-nine, to write, design, and layout our magazine. This magazine is a platform for teens to have their voice heard. We have about fifty middle and high school students in our program from all over the county. We're a very diverse group, with two core programs and clubs at both South and West High School, as well as a class at Gordon Parks Academy. The members choose the content, do the research, write the articles, take the photos, produce podcasts, and so much more. This school year has included our Fight Fentanyl campaign. We have teamed up with the Sheriff's Department, Wichita Police Department, and other local organizations such as Wesley Medical Center and the Wichita Crime Commission to get this life-saving information out to the youth in our communities. The students in our program have created a peer-led campaign to share this very important information to their peers. When we started our campaign in September, one person every ten minutes in the U.S. was dying due to fentanyl poisoning. Midway through our program, it was every eight minutes. And as I stand before you today, it's every five minutes. Teen deaths are up ninety-four percent in the United States due to fentanyl, and since it's been introduced into our communities. And Sedgwick County leads the state in deaths related to fentanyl poisonings. Based on the research that we've done, we've learned that in order to get information into the hands of the teens, it's much better received and retained when they get it from their peers. That's why this platform is so vital to helping our teens today deal with and overcome any issues that they face as middle and high school students. Several of our students have come tonight to speak and share their thoughts and opinions on why this is so important, to have their voice heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremiah Ogless.
So, we are all aware that drugs are harmful and affect our youth negatively. Yet, for one reason or another, we choose not to talk about the fact that our youth still continues to use and interact with drugs actively. It's time that our youth actually does something to make a change. If we know drugs are harmful, why don't we advocate for their secession? Fight Fentanyl and Riverside High are both things that Teen View actively works with to spread the advocacy and awareness of fentanyl poisoning, both in our youth and as well as our community. Every day, people are dying due to fentanyl poisoning, people that we know, people that we go to school and have classes with. If we know that this is a serious problem, why don't we do anything to stop it? Riverside High is more than just a comic. It is a tool used by youth for youth to show the severity of fentanyl poisoning, as well as putting it all into perspective. We, Teen View Magazine, as an organization, strongly believe that our youth needs Riverside High and the promotion of the Fight Fentanyl Campaign to be broadcasted, mentioned, heard of, and spread around schools so that people can learn that death due to fentanyl can truly happen to anyone. Posters hung around busy areas of our school do little. We need something that will stand out to our community and our youth. Registering our candidate in our building was our good step, but in what direction? With this, we are essentially saying that you can do drugs, and once you do, we'll have you covered. Although it's good that we have it to ensure that nothing bad happens, we should attack the bigger issue in this metaphorical scenario, the fact that they got the drugs to begin with. If statistics prove that one hundred percent of drugs found and sold on the streets are counterfeit, why doesn't anyone know? It's, it's time, due time, that our youth has a source of information, a reliable source of information, and a true source of information. Teens need to know that the dangers of fentanyl poisoning and all of that. And with Riverside High, we believe it's the best way to show this. A fictional story with real-world consequences, dialogue, dialogues, and plots, Riverside High is truly the best way for teens to learn about the fentanyl issue that has been killing thousands. And everything I'm saying, I'm truly passionate about, because before joining this campaign and advocating for this cause, I never even knew about fentanyl. Sure, I noticed a poster on freshman orientation day, but it was just that to me, a poster, nothing more than a large piece of paper on the wall you look at once and never pay attention to. Riverside High crushes that, a comic that while addressing real issues, still keeps you interested and wondering what will happen next. Unlike the poster on the wall, the story is always changing and updating, growing to be more than just a comic. The fact that USD two-five-nine is not doing anything about the advocacy of this dangerous issue simply puts in perspective that USD two-five-nine does not think the way their main demographic, kids, actually think. I am sick of constantly seeing events, news, and policies, and so much other stuff that claim to be for students that are just disconnected from the way it really is. If you really want change and progression for the excellence of our youth, ask them the best way to address this. The notion that students don't know the best way to spread news or talk about things stems entirely from adults, adults who don't put their trust in our youth and decide to make decisions for them. Granted, not all youth and students think ahead or even care for certain topics, but that doesn't mean that adults should just take over it all. It's time that our youth decides to address these outdated means of reaching out and helping. Riverside High is just one of the many ways that teens can actually help teens in figuring out a way to better themselves. With your help, advocacy for real problems middle and high schoolers face can be spread and talked about. We must face the good and the ugly to grow. Hopefully, my words meant something to you guys, something to you guys. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Connie Dietz.
Good evening, President Logan, Vice President Albert. Congratulations to both of you, and Superintendent Thompson, and fellow board members. My name is Connie Dietz, and as noted in the agenda, I reside in zip code six-seven-two-two-six, which makes me a resident of District Two with Julie. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening, and I'm not gonna talk about fentanyl. However, I'm very glad that the youth are here tonight doing that. I attended your meeting on January twenty-third and listened with interest to the conversation regarding the desired characteristics of our next superintendent. I am here this evening to applaud you for including the statement, "The candidate has a commitment to and experience working with all genders, races, and socio-economic groups while promoting positive and inclusive student behavior and so forth." During the meeting, it was alluded to that the statement wasn't necessary, as it was included in the other characteristics. Following the meeting, I carefully read the other items and personally did not find anything that clearly stated the inclusivity, nondiscriminatory, excuse me, language, as well as the added statement. It is imperative that our next superintendent clearly understands and fully embraces the diversity within the Wichita District. You are to be commended for referencing our diversity as part of your opening statement, which is operating environment of the district, in which you included the statement, "Our district is richly diverse," and we saw that this evening. You then proceeded to provide data that describes our student population. You mentioned that our district is a minority-majority district, with approximately seventy percent of our students from non-Caucasian ethnic groups, that our students speak over one hundred different languages, representing ninety-three countries of birth, and that over seventy-eight percent of our students experience some level economic disadvantage. You had the courage to boldly state in your Board Policy four-hundred, which is your nondiscrimination statement, excuse me, that the Wichita Public Schools is committed to ensuring an environment that is free of discrimination and to fostering a climate in which all employees and students may participate, contribute, and grow to their fullest potential. The policy continues with, "The Wichita Public Schools does not discriminate on the basis of race, color, national origin, religion, sex, gender identity, sexual orientation, disability, age, veteran status, genetic information, or other legally protected classifications." Because of our rich diversity in gender identity, race, and socio-economic groups, it would be absolutely unconscionable for our next superintendent to not be expected to demonstrate full commitment to and experience in working with a similarly diverse school district. Again, I thank you for including the additional language that clearly states your strong commitment to serving all of our students regardless of their gender identity, race, or socio-economic status. I'd be glad to answer any questions, and thank you for the time.
Thank you. Lydia Harper.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Lydia Harper, and I am a senior at South High School. Thank you for giving me these three minutes to share my voice about why we should share our episodes of Riverside High that we have worked hard on since July. Riverside High is not just episodes we made for fun. We started a Fight Fentanyl campaign to help others understand the dangers this drug is causing the world and mainly our youth. Our youth will not listen to adults and take them seriously, because they never think it could happen to them until it does. The youth will understand it coming from us teens and putting Riverside High together by us in the words we use today. It may not only stop this horrific drug used, but to bring awareness around the world. Riverside High may not only impact our world, but help others understand that this is not a drug to mess with. I am beyond heartbroken to hear all of these heart-wrenching stories from parents who have never deserved to lose their child so soon to fentanyl, and it hurts even worse the way they got it, because if they hadn't touched that drug, they would still be here today. Knowing it could be one of my family members or friends one day also hurts because of what the world is nowadays, dangerous. This is why Teen View Magazine members are here today to let our voice be heard, and why you should take in that we are putting our hearts into this. Taking time out of our day to show that we want to change the world. We are doing Riverside High because we care and did not put this effort in for nothing to be done. Fentanyl is hurting our community, not making it any better, and if we do not speak out about it in different ways, not every teen is going to understand that this drug is deadly and can happen to anyone. So, it is extremely important to us that we spread the word in an interesting way for our youth to watch and to not get news in a dual way. Thank you.
Becky Allen Buschka. And you did bring something for us, and it's being passed out to the board. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that for me, by the way. Good evening, President Logan, and board members. I feel a little inadequate here right now after listening to the moving testimony from these kids. I admire the heck out of you guys, I just want you to know. Great job. My name is Becky Allen Buschka, and I'm here on behalf of Women for Kansas, the Wichita Chapter. Women for Kansas is a nonpartisan group of local citizens who advocate for moderate policies that advance the well-being of all Kansans. I stand here today to thank all members of the board for your generous commitment to our community, and we honor the incredible time and energy you spend to improve our community. Thank you. We also want to wish, make a public statement regarding the matter of your, from your January board meeting, and at that meeting, a report was given about the top ten desired characteristics. And at that meeting, a report was given about the top 10 desired characteristics for our next school superintendent. The inclusion of two additional characteristics was also proposed, debated, and ultimately accepted four to three. One of these characteristics engendered considerable discussion. This characteristic was stated below. Commitment and experience working with all genders, races, and socioeconomic groups while promoting positive and inclusive student behavior conducive to a healthy and safe learning environment. Women for Kansas commends the inclusion of that language. Women for Kansas particularly likes how specific the language is. The word "all genders, races, and socioeconomic groups" are noticeably different from the language of the original list of superintendent characteristics. These added words do different things than the original of diversity and moral compass rooted in justice and equality. All those, those words are important. The words "all genders, races, and socioeconomic groups" name those groups, and I consider that very important. Naming acknowledges historical and contemporary fact. Naming envisions a specific and accountable future. Naming, as we see you, we embrace you, and you are welcome. Women for Kansas supports you in that inclusion. Thank you very much. And once again, good job, students.
Thank you. Marita Cela.
Hello. My name is Mariella Celine. Thank you for your patience and for listening to us. I go, I'm a junior at South High. I believe Riverside High should be in, can I? I believe Riverside High should be in high schools because I don't like hearing the news that my classmate is gone of fentanyl. Riverside High is another way where teens can find out of the dangers of fentanyl in case if their parents don't have the resources or know about it too much. I play the main chara- one of the main characters, Sabrina Garcia, in Riverside High, and every episode was very impactful in their own ways. One episode that really had a great impact on me was the scene where we show, shoot the party scene where our other main character, Amari, overdoses. During that, it happened so fast, we only had one chance to make, to take the photos. It felt so real to me when the EMS came in. It really made me tear up and get very anxious because I can't imagine the families and the other, other people that go through this, and it's so heartbreaking, like, it could be anyone. And that just, it's really, really life-changing. Riverside has really opened up my eyes about everything that I never knew about. Teen View Magazine has done a lot for me, has given me a lot of new skills with everything with photography, and I am really truly grateful for you guys. I want Riverside High to make a big impact on teens because it did on me. And if it did on me, I know it can make a big impact on everyone else. I don't want to keep listening to these stories. I want Riverside High to help other teens live and live their full potential. Thank you.
Kristis Foster.
Hello. My name is Kristis Foster. I'm a junior, and I go to South. And I'm here today wearing nice clothes, not to look presentable, but to give you an idea of me. But it doesn't tell you who I am or how I act. It gives you an idea of me. Who can you trust? Who can you really trust? In Riverside High and the Teen View Magazine, I play the role of Bones, who is a drug dealer that doesn't show his face because it's the fact that you don't know who a drug dealer can be. It could be anyone, like your mom, dad, brother, sister, friend, neighbor, or even your child. Many people get a lot of illegal substances or basically anything from whoever they can at that moment. But they don't know what is laced. They don't know if it's the real thing they want. Riverside High makes it real and makes it show teens and anybody what this stuff can do to people. Because they don't know how fatal something can be, I didn't know how much fentanyl was taking lives until Teen View. I didn't know how many kids were being taken from their parents, and the more people don't talk about it, the more people get taken away. My family, my friends, my neighbors, it could be anyone. This has to stop. Thanks.
Joyce Davis. Oh, okay. Is that Kevani, too?
Oh, sorry. Joyce Davis had never seen, wasn't going to be able to help, but can Sydney Johnson speak in her voice?
We can't substitute in. Thank you, though, very much. Kevani's not here either. Okay. And Rick Neal.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to start by saying thank you to the, for the opportunity to address you today and express our concerns in regards to the sale of the Black Bear Boson School. I'd like to start by commending Garvey Ventures, if there's anybody here from Garvey, for wanting, taking the opportunity to invest in the property and look forward to working with them in the area. You've been given handouts that I have prepared, which is the covenants, restrictive covenants for the area that Black Bear Boson falls under. And on the next-to-last page shows you the footprint and the location of the school in that footprint for McEwenick State's fourth edition. Our concerns are that we haven't got any information in regards to what their proposals to construct would be. We're concerned about multifamily housing in the area and how it addresses our utilities and our traffic loads and our runoff and other things that would come from developing it in a multifamily setting as opposed to a single-family setting as the covenants direct. So we, like I said, we are a covenant community for single-family. We're adversely concerned that it'll adversely affect our property values in the area. And we, we really enjoy the solitude of the community that we live in. We've invested a lot of money to live in this area, and we want to keep our property values safe. Under Part IV of the contract that you have proposed, or, excuse me, Part VII, we asked, I am speaking on behalf of myself as a resident of the community and the other residents in the area which have been able to attend. And one of them is a letter that you've also gotten from Julian Lim. I don't know if you have that in your paperwork there now, but talking about population density, devaluation of the home pricing, and increase in traffic, and especially concerns for the children in the area as they walk and play and walk and do the things that they do in the area. I asked under the contract, under Part VII, that perhaps you could insert the restrictive covenants that are required for the McEwenick Edition, which states a single-family is the sole intent. Do you have any other further questions for me at this time?
I'm seeing Kathy Bond. Oh, I'm so sorry. There are no questions. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
I apologize, Kathy. I didn't see that.
I would like to really thank you students for coming. I met some of you at the function at the extension office and learned you. You are a number one. You are really good at getting your message across. This Teen View Magazine, has the board ever seen a magazine? And do you have any with you? Great. And has, has the district been approached before about circulating these magazines in our schools?
Yes, and the, as well as our videos and documents.
You'll need to come down to the microphone. But unfortunately, it doesn't pick it up.
We have partnered with the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department to get this message out. And along with Sheriff Easter, we sat together on a committee, and we decided what the content and subject matter of each episode should consist of. So we touch on, the issue you have in front of you is going to be the party scene that Mariella referenced, where the child actually overdoses at the party. She administers Narcan and is able to save him. But it started in September, so if you guys would like, I have no problem getting you all of the episodes from September till now. The Police Department and the Sheriff's Department, Chad Ditch is here, they participate. They do an intro and an outro to every single video that we do. They talk about the dangers of fentanyl, how students are getting it, where they can properly dispose of pills if they find pills, the emojis and the emoticons that are being used so parents can be familiar with what is being, what their kids are actually doing. So we had a comprehensive, probably six or eight-week, every-week meeting to get all this information together so that the Sheriff's Department could tell us what they want the kids to know. So we together came, they did videos for the adults. We did the videos. They're doing adults, educators, and parents. We're doing students and middle and high school students and young college students. So that's the reason the kids have written the script, done everything they've done to try to get this out. It's, it's very important.
I would like to thank you for this because I have read all of the issues from September to current, and it does keep you wanting to continue to read to see what happens next. And isn't it true that people that think they're getting Percocets are actually laced with fentanyl?
Yes, ma'am. 100% of the pills that are found, this is based on the DEA, 100% of the pills that are bought on the street today are fentanyl-laced. They're all counterfeit pills. 60% of those are deadly. The way the DEA is currently setting it out for middle and high school students is they're saying, "If you put 10 french fries on a table and six of them can kill you, which ones are you going to eat?" So it's very important that those numbers and those ratios are expressed because it started out at 40% at the beginning of our campaign, and now it's up to 60.
Have you been able to give presentations to any of our high schools or middle schools?
We were extremely blessed to be able to do 15 different presentations during the week of Red Ribbon Week. And one of those was at West High School. The counselor and principal there were super excited to have us there. We got to speak to 1,300 high school students. And in showing the videos that we show, one is dead on arrival, and the other is Riverside High, you could hear a pin drop, and that was 1,300 high school students. It was very impactful. Only one from USD 259.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to the kids that came tonight, too. We appreciate your being here, and it's obvious your work is making a difference. So thank you. Superintendent?
Good job. Thank you.
Would you, we just recently rolled out the Narcan in our buildings, and could you address that for me, please?
So there is, we do have a team. I'm going to go ahead and let my expert come because we do have quite a few things that are happening in the Wichita Public Schools as it relates to fentanyl work. And we also have Narcan in our schools. And so I'll just let Terry kind of give you a little bit of an overview of where we are and what we've done.
Terry Moses, Director of Safety and Environmental Services. In regards to the fentanyl project, I actually am a member of that group that she talked about with the Sheriff's Department. We were the first group that actually the Sheriff's Department used our information that we put out in regards to fentanyl on our newsletter that we put out in March of '22. I've only seen two of the videos. I haven't seen all of them. We did have some concerns about those, and I expressed those, and we're willing to work with them in regards to showing them district-wide. But there are some concerns that I think that we showed them to our district crisis team. In terms of what we're doing, we're focusing on educating our staff because that's how we get the information out then to kids. So we've done newsletters in regards to fentanyl. We also have that, of course, as a part of our normal curriculum, as a part of our health curriculum. It is a mandated part of health curriculum in terms of drug use, just overall drug use. But I agree totally with the kids. When you have a specific item, you need to do it very specific. And so we're trying to get the information out through the newsletters to get to the kids. We have searched and searched and searched for a short video, just like the very first group that talked to you from the Super SAC. What we're looking for is a short video that can really just summarize the information about fentanyl. We've decided that we're going to do the same thing we did with suicide prevention, run, hide, fight, and earthquake. We're going to use our kids and create our own, and we'd be happy to use these kids as well to do that, to do that 30-second informational, information about how you send information out.
Thank you. This obviously is a topic that all of us are concerned about because it's very real in our community. So we appreciate the work that you're doing, and we appreciate the work that you all are doing with the Riverside High magazine. So thank you very much. Next item?
Next item, education.
Do we not have a, oh, yes, education. All right. I'm sorry. Superintendent Thompson?
I'm going to go ahead and move very quickly into this item. This is our alternative program options for some of our high school students. The Wichita Acceleration Academy, we call it WAA. And we're going to give you kind of an update of this particular program and share some relevant information with you. I'll turn it over to my colleagues.
All right, I'll begin. Welcome again. I'm Amanda Kingery, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools, and I have my colleague with me.
I'm Lauren Hatfield, one of the executive directors of secondary schools.
And so we're here, kind of what Dr. Thompson said. And back in August, there was a request from the board specifically, Ms. Crable, asking for more information about Wichita Acceleration Academy once it's up and running, trying to give some data. And so that's what we're going to do today. We're going to share a little bit of data with you. But not just with Wichita Acceleration Academy, also known as WAA, like Dr. Thompson said, but we're going to share some of our other alternative programs with you to talk about kind of how we have some alternative credit options for our high school students and then the, and then give you some outcomes from those programs. And this should not look unfamiliar to any of you. This is our district strategic plan, so we have four goals. This is something that was approved by the board back in 20, last year, to extend out to 2025. And one of the goals that we're going to address specifically this evening is increasing the graduation rate. And the goal for the graduation rate is to have our students be at 80% graduation rate by the year 2025. We are proud to say that last year, we actually met that goal with 80.4% of our students who graduated. But we know that that's not where we want to stop. Just because we got there, that doesn't mean we're going to end there. So we're going to keep pushing forward. But a lot of these programs that we're going to talk to you about actually are helping support with the graduation rate. And I know Dr. Hatfield will talk to you more about that kind of at the end of how they're supporting with that increase of the graduation rate. You also have a handout that was given to you. We don't have it up here, but we wanted you to have an opportunity to kind of dig through the data so you could see the specifics of our subgroups and how, what the changes and what the data looks like, starting from 2018 to current. So those of you who don't know, Dr. Hatfield, she is quite organized. I think we all are, but to the extent of everything in this PowerPoint is color-coded for you. but to the extent of everything in this PowerPoint is color coded for you. So we're going to talk to you about alternative credit options. Anytime you see a PowerPoint that has a red background, you'll know it's actually, that is a program that is outside of your base school. Meaning if you are a student that is, your base school is South High, for example. If, if we're showing it in red, that means that student would actually have to leave South High to go to attend that building or that school. So it's something that does not take place at the regular high school. Then if you see something that's in that golden color, orangish gold color, then that is going to be within the school. So those are programs that are within the high schools. A student doesn't have to leave to get access to those type of services or programs. And then lastly, I think it looks kind of magenta on ours, but it looks purple up there. So if you see something that's in purple, those are our summer programs and that's anything that takes place obviously after the school hours. So you have another handout that was given to you. I don't know that I have that with me. There you go. That looks like this. This is kind of a one pager and a little bit on the back that gives you a synopsis of all of the different programs. So you'll see them on the PowerPoint, but then you also have access to it so you can read a little bit more. With that being said, a majority of this presentation is going to, actually the rest of it's going to be Dr. Hatfield. And the reason we're passing it on over to her is because she's actually the principal supervisor over all of our alternative programs. So she's in those buildings all the time. So she has a really great feel of what's happening. So we're going to pass it over to you.
Thank you, Amanda. We're going to start with Chester Lewis. And I'm going to try to scoop my chair up and not bang the table because you can hear that on the TV. So Chester Lewis Alternative High School is a large umbrella that encompasses, encompasses a variety of alternative programs. So Wichita Alternative, the Adult Learning Center, Town East Learning Center, Flex, Transitions. These are all alternative programs that you might hear thrown around, but they're all underneath the Chester Lewis umbrella. If you think of Chester Lewis as an umbrella and then all the alternative programs underneath. So Chester Lewis uses small classes in a blended learning environment to, to really give students an opportunity to recover credits at a faster rate than they can when they're in a base school. So that's why the student would have to leave, in Amanda's example, South High to attend Chester Lewis is because they're needing to recover credits at a faster rate. And so we've got to put them in a different setting to allow them to recover those, those credits. So Chester Lewis colloquially known as the Chet is the Timberwolves. And it is our largest alternative programs that's outside of the comprehensive setting. So right now at Chester Lewis or in these various programs that are under the Chester Lewis umbrella, there are 322 seniors enrolled, just seniors. 53 of them have already completed everything they need to graduate this May. So they're, they're already done, they count for us in the class of 2023. There's another 217 that, based on their current pace of work, we would expect to graduate this May. There are also 10 kids from the class of 2024 who have also already finished. So they were behind on their graduation requirements. They went to Chester Lewis, they not only caught up, but then they got ahead. So they're actually already finished. And so this gives us, under the Chester Lewis umbrella, approximately 280 graduates this year. Chester Lewis has a WhIG, a wildly important goal. As an alternative school, sometimes it's hard to frame WhIGs, right? Because, you know, their graduation rate might not ever be 80% because they're an alternative program. So they have to think about their wildly important goal differently. Chester Lewis' WhIG is to add at least 8% to our district graduation rate because of their programs. So they, we do some rough math every year to try to figure out how many graduates they would need. This year, they'd need approximately 260 to hit that 8% goal. So this puts them projected above their 8% wildly important goal of adding to our district graduation rate this year. Next is Education Imagine Academy or EIA because we don't do anything without acronyms. So we're going to throw acronyms all over the place, EIA. And that is our virtual school. And EIA does serve K-12, but because the, this program is focused on alternative ways to earn high school credit, we're going to focus the data on high school. Their, EIA's high school currently has 238 students enrolled as of Friday. They enrolled two more kids, so that is in fact an accurate number, 238. 58 of those being seniors. 21 of those kids have already completed what they need to, to graduate, so they are ready to roll. There's another 28 that they expect to graduate in May, based on their current pace of work, which gives us 49 expected graduates from EIA this year. Next is Gateway Alternative Program. And then it's alternative program instead of a school because kids are actually cross-enrolled between their base school and Gateway. So they don't physically go to their base school, but like in Synergy, which is our student information system, we'll keep using South High since that's what we used at the beginning, the kid is enrolled both at South and at Gateway, but they physically go to Gateway and they attend at Gateway until they are ready to go back to South and then they go back to their base school. So Gateway Alternative Program does serve students in grades six through 12. So it's middle school and high school. And it is designed specifically for students who have violated district behavior policies. So, so far this year, Gateway has served 77 kids. So 77 kids have been enrolled at Gateway and 18 of which have since gone back to their base school after having been enrolled at Gateway. There are a couple of different ways to be assigned to Gateway, a hearing or an AES. So the hearing process, which you might be more familiar with, can result in return to base school, extended suspension, reassignment or expulsion. So Gateway is one of the places you could be reassigned to. So maybe you're at South High, we'll keep using South High. You're at South High, you violate a district behavior policy, you go to a hearing and the hearing officer says, I'm going to reassign you to Gateway from now through the end of the year. That would be an example of how you get to Gateway. So 79%, 61 of the kids so, that have been at Gateway this year have come through the hearing reassignment. You can also get to Gateway through an AES. And an AES stands for Alternative Education Setting. That is specifically for students with a disability and can only be requested for drugs, weapons or serious bodily injury. The vast majority of ours are which, are drugs. So apropos that the kids were here talking about kind of their, their awareness campaign. And so 16 kids or 21% of those that have been served at Gateway this year have been placed at Gateway via an AES. Gateway also houses our GAP program. GAP program is brand new, started by our Neglected and Delinquent Office. And so the program is specifically designed for incarcerated youth who are going back into school and maybe need a smaller place to re-get their feet wet with school before they go all the way back into a comprehensive setting. So it's filling the gap that they've had, make sure they're ready and prepared before they go back to a large comprehensive high school. Sowers Alternative High School is up here. The reason it has an asterisk is because Sowers is only for students with an IEP. So there'll be two programs on here that you see that have asterisks and that just indicates that not everyone can go to that program or utilize that program. It can only be with students with an IEP. So Sowers is based on what we call an LRE, again, acronyms, Least Restricted Environment. And so every IEP team has to meet to decide what a student's least restricted environment is. So for example, the most, the least restrictive environment of all is in a comprehensive high school with general education peers. But there are various levels, so you can get more restricted. So Sowers is actually our most restricted environment. So it is the least, least restrictive. And so in the Sowers example, all of those IEP teams have decided that the student's least restricted environment is, needs to be highly structured with a significant amount of social and emotional support, is what those IEP teams have decided. And that those students need to be outside of a comprehensive setting in order to receive that. Students with an IEP can be assigned to Sowers via a hearing or an AES, similar to, to Gateway. But Sowers' goal is to help those students learn coping strategies and understand their disability to the extent that they could move them back into a less restricted environment, which is their base high school. So so far this year, 116 students have been served at Sowers, 85 are currently enrolled. That does not mean all 31 of those students are back in their base school. Some of them are, others might have moved or they might have disclaimed, dropped out, disclaim is another word for dropout. So not all 31 are back in their base school, but there is a, there is a difference of 31 between total served and kids that are there right now. Sowers also has a night school, a very small night school. Students with a disability, we are required to provide them a free and appropriate public education. And so sometimes we need to use night school to make sure we provide FAP to a student and that's a super small program. They've got eight students that do attend Sowers Night School right now. Next is Wichita Acceleration Academy. I'll show you some more data about this one just because that was the original request from Ms. Crable. And I do want to acknowledge Chris Turner is up in the corner, he'll give you a wave. Chris is the Program Director at Wichita Acceleration Academy. He has the probably not-so-great honor of having to meet with me every single week to discuss the program and kids going over there. But Acceleration Academy is specifically came from ESAR dollars. This is one of the things that we are using ESAR dollars for. And it is a disclaim prevention measure. So disclaim again is another term for dropout. So we do not want students to disclaim because that means that they are no longer attending school. And Ed Mentum is on here because Wichita Acceleration, that is the curriculum that they use in their online platform for their class. So we use what's called Edgenuity in some of our in-house online stuff. That Ed Mentum is what they use. It's similar to Edgenuity, just a little bit different program. So this is the newest program. There are currently 235 students enrolled at Wichita Acceleration Academy. And they are open year round. They are also open in the summer. So when this quarter graphic goes up, I want to explain a couple of things. You're like, what, why are there only eight course completions in the first, first quarter? Well, Wichita Acceleration Academy has been open almost one year to the day. They just started accept, they started accepting students in the middle of last February and their orientation days were Thursdays and we had a snow day for like, felt like 78 Thursdays in a row, even though there's not that many in a year. So we, we had, it took some time to start getting students into Acceleration Academy, finding out about it. But once we finally got some momentum going with students enrolling, that's where you see those course completions jump. And then the dip in the fourth quarter makes a little bit of sense because that's where all of your major holidays are, right? And so because their quarters are not our quarters for school, their quarters are literally quarters of the year. So you know, January through March is their quarter one, not ours. The next graphic, this is just the student population at Acceleration Academy by age. So you do have to be 16 before you can disclaim. So it does make sense that the bulk of the student population is between the ages of 16 and 18. There are some that are not 16 yet. They are there on special approval from the secondary office. So maybe they have a sibling that goes there or maybe, you know, things really aren't working out and this is the best alternative program match for that student of all the alternative programs we have. So we give them an opportunity to go to Acceleration Academy and try over there. They also have students that are older than 18 because they originally got their list of here's potential students by saying, here's every kid that has disclaimed or we've had to exit from our system as whereabouts unknown in the last five years. So what Acceleration Academy has done is they have gone, they've taken that list and gone and trying to find those kids to bring them back into school to say, hey, we know you dropped out at some point, but we want to give you this opportunity to try to come back and earn your diploma. So they're a disclaim prevention measure in two ways. One, they're going and finding kids that are previously disclaimed and bringing them back to school. And two, our disclaim experts, our, our ladies that conduct all of our disclaim appointments, match this program to students who have scheduled a disclaim appointment, if this is the best match for them. Sometimes the best match is Chester Lewis, sometimes the best match is, you know, Flex, sometimes it's Town East, we have lots. They analyze the student, the student need, the student transcript to match the kid with the program to basically say, try this before you drop out. We want you to try this first. We really want you to earn your high school diploma. So that's another way that Acceleration Academy gets their students is through that, those disclaim appointments and those ladies matching the student with the Acceleration Academy model. Alright, this next graphic, Wichita Acceleration Academy groups their students by tiers with how many credits those students still need to graduate. And so their tier one students are students that still need 15 and a half or more credits in order to earn their high school diploma, which if you read across the top line, they're predicting that they're going to need a little over two years if they average, they take one class at a time at WAA. And so if they average three to four weeks to complete a class, every class is a half of credit, they would need a little over two years to earn that. That's also why we don't want a ton of 14 and 15-year-olds at Acceleration Academy because you gotta, you gotta be on it in terms of pace to keep up with the pace that you could earn credits in a comprehensive setting. But for those students that are really far behind, they really like to take advantage of the fact that it's open year round, they're open on some holidays that were closed, things like that, so that the students can get in there and get classes done faster. And a lot of students like that, it's just one class at a time. So let me focus on this science class and then switch gears and let me focus on this math class, et cetera, et cetera. So you can read across, but the tier two students, how many credits they need, the amount of, average amount of time it would take to complete, same with tier two, tier three and tier four. Last Friday, Acceleration Academy had their first graduation ceremony. Ms. Bond actually got to go and see that. So they had 22 students graduate last, they've actually, some of them have been graduated for a while, they just had the ceremony last Friday, bringing them all together. So they had 17 students that are current, that should be class of 2023 students that graduated on Friday. They had one actually that was, that's a 2025 cohort whose sibling was at Acceleration Academy who really ramped up the pace and was able to complete. And then NG stands for No Grade. Those are students whose cohort are considered adults by the state and they're already two years past their cohort graduation date. So those are students who are 2021 or before. So those are kids that, you know, Acceleration Academy went out, found, you've disclaimed in the past, come back, keep working on this. That covers our outside of the bill, oh, there's one more, I lied. Acceleration Academy also anticipates 33 graduates in the next calendar year, based on kids they currently have enrolled and the pace which they're currently completing classes. So they expect 15 in the next six months. You can see where those kids and their cohorts are coming from, nine of them from 2023, two from 2024, two from 2025, and then two of those No Grade students. And then another 18, the six months after that, which you can see is 10, one, two and three across that same cohort. Acceleration Academy, we just had their Quarter Four Report. And so they put this together for all of you as just some additional information, some of the same information that we presented up here, just an additional handout for you to understand what Acceleration Academy's is and what it isn't. Because we still have to do a lot of understanding about both of those things for our families in our community. That covers what takes place outside of a base school. So you've left your base school, you're somewhere else. And so now we'll cover what happens if, what's inside your base school. And by far, the most popular alternative credit option we have in the base schools are the high school learning centers. Every single one of our comprehensive high schools have a learning center where students can take Edgenuity classes for credit recovery. So for example, let's say I failed English one first semester and now I'm a junior and I'm still missing that English one credit. So one of the hours, instead of taking an elective, I can take the learning center class where I can work in this Edgenuity and work to make up that English one first semester credit that I'm missing so that I can get back on track to graduate. That's what our learning centers are. Our learning centers average 30 to 35 seats every hour of the day in every single one of our comprehensive high schools. And some of our schools have used ESAR dollars or creative use of their master schedule to add to add additional learning center courses or additional learning center seats in that hour to try to maximize the space. So this graph shows you the enrollment at every one of our comprehensive buildings, and there's two different colors. So the students in that darker teal, those are all students that have were in a learning center earlier this year, completed everything they needed to get back on track to graduate and are not in a learning center anymore. That's what the the darker color is. And then the lighter teal, those are students who are still enrolled in a learning center because they still have some credits that they need to get back on track to graduate. And then this other graphic shows you so far this year, just since August, students have recovered six hundred twenty-point-five credits in our high school learning centers. And then there's also that small three percent sliver, twenty-one and a half. Those are original credits. So we allow a student to take an original credit class in a learning center on a special circumstance. So, for example, I moved here from Texas, and Texas doesn't require me to take financial literacy, and I'm a senior. And I've got a class, I've got a full schedule of other things I need to graduate, and I can't I I can't fit financial literacy into my schedule, but I need it to graduate. Then we can put you in an original credit financial literacy in a learning center so that you can get the credits you need to graduate. So that's why that small twenty-one-point-five sliver is in there. Within Reach is kind of like a learning center, but specifically for students with disabilities. Again, you have to have an IEP in order to access Within Reach. And sometimes that online self-paced curriculum does not suit the needs of the students who might need the credit recovery. And so students in Within Reach use a combination of videos, assignments and projects to build a portfolio that meets the academic core standards for whatever they're trying to recover. These portfolios have been vetted through our Learning Services Department to make sure they're hitting all of the academic standards that are needed for each recovery course. And then this is also a pretty new for us, but they have this in all of our comprehensive high schools, as well as at Sowers, at Gateway, at Chester Lewis, and all of the alternative programs. They also have Within Reach coupled into that. So some exciting data. This is fall of twenty-two, so this is just this fall. One hundred and sixty-seven credits were recovered. There were two hundred and twenty-three students enrolled in a Within Reach program across our district. Seventeen of those two twenty-three are now back on track to graduate and aren't in Within Reach anymore. And then one was a fifth-year senior who actually completed what they needed to and have since graduated. And then Nikki, who is over Within Reach, was able to send me some other data. So here's some information for the spring. There are currently two hundred ninety-seven students enrolled in Within Reach this spring. And the uptick makes sense because last fall, we had no freshmen that needed to take this, right? They haven't had a high school semester. Well, now, there's freshmen that have had a high school semester and, oh, no, I failed first semester English one, I need that. So now there's that group of freshmen that need to contribute to to being within reach. Of course, we don't know how many classes they've recovered because, you know, it's February. And then last summer, they ran Within Reach. And last summer, one hundred and eighteen students participated in a Within Reach program last summer, and they recovered two hundred forty-three credits last summer. And ten of those kids were seniors who recovered everything they needed to graduate last summer. You're going to have to hear me talk about summer school again in March, but you may or may not know that. So we're not going to spend all the time on the summer programs, but I do want to give you a little bit of a glimpse and a look because it wouldn't be talking about our alternative programs if we didn't talk about the offerings that we have in summer for high school. We run ELO. So ELO, again, it extends the semester by thirty hours. So at the end of the semester, you had a fifty-three percent, you have to have a grade in the fifties, but we extend that hour by extend extend the semester by thirty hours and say, okay, can you show me that you actually have more standards mastered so that you can earn a D instead of getting that F on your transcript? So then the student doesn't have to go take a class in a learning center because they've gotten the D instead of the F. So any student that is eligible for ELO that doesn't do it now has to go retake the entire course in a learning center. And so we just finished, we run ELO in January and June. We just finished January because that's for fall classes, and then in June, we run it again for spring classes. So hot off the press, our January ELO data is we had one thousand one hundred eight students used ELO to get a D in a class instead of get an F in a class. So that's one thousand one hundred eight kids who do not have to know now go take a learning center class because they used ELO. That is a fourteen-point-one percent increase in students who effectively utilize eligible students who effectively utilized ELO from last January. So I just want to give a shout out to our ELO administrators and coordinators who really took the message of call call every single kid that's eligible, tell them why they should do this instead of having to go retake an entire semester. And of course, we still want that number to improve, but I will take a fourteen-point-one percent increase on this every every single day of the week. And last but not least, summer school, what we offer summer school for. Just a reminder that last summer was the largest high school summer school Wichita Public Schools has ever had, with a total of one thousand fifty-two students earning seven hundred thirty-six and a half credits last summer in our summer school with almost fifty-fifty split between original credits and recovery credits. Looking at each individual program in and of itself is helpful because it gives us a glimpse into each individual program. But sometimes it's nice to have a a global view about, okay, what do all of these things do together? Anne and I was a math teacher, so we have to have a math moment here. So since this is just June of 2022, these these numbers have been tabulated, five thousand four hundred and eight kids have been served in some capacity by the alternative programs that have just been described to you. Three hundred ninety-one of them have graduated already since June because of these alternative programs. That doesn't even count kids who will graduate this May because they were in an alternative program and had an opportunity to earn enough credits to get back on track to graduate. Not counting Chester Lewis, EIA, Gateway or Sowers, because those kids are in a schedule earning credits like normal. We just don't calculate credits earned that way. So take those four off the table. In the other alternative programs, two thousand five hundred and forty-six and a half credits have been earned by students in these alternative programs since June. So trying to put that all together and doing some very rough math, and I say it's rough math because we can't project graduates into the future, and we don't know exactly how many seniors are in 2023 when we pull data, because any kid that, you know, started with us back in their freshman year, but they're not here now, they still, you know, it's rough math. The minimum impact that these programs have had on our 2023 graduation rate is twelve-point-three percent. So you take kids that have graduated and projected amount of kids that could be in our class of 2023 that will count for us. These alternative programs have taken that graduation rate from, let's just use last year's number, potentially a sixty-eight-point-one percent graduation rate to an eighty-point-four percent graduation rate. And so I think it's important to understand the scope of what these programs do when you put them all together. And Amanda and I would be happy to take any questions that you have.
Well, those four four programs you mentioned that are housed in specific buildings, where do these other programs, where are they housed? Where where does a student come to to go to the Acceleration Academy to come to each of the other things?
Yeah, so there on your handout, it says physically where it's located, but I can run through those for you. So Chester Lewis is at our Chester Lewis campus, which is, of course, the old Northeast Magnet High School building on Chautauqua. Then EIA, the physical, even though it's a virtual school, the physical location of EIA is our JFISC building that is downtown, that's still there downtown. And then Gateway is located on Fifteenth, just north of the river, in an old elementary school. I don't know what the original elementary school was, but it's in an old elementary school building. So you can set, you can literally stand in one spot and see every spot of the building. It's the craziest thing. And then Acceleration Academy has a physical location that is right next to the Cargill Building downtown on Douglas.
Next to the what?
Cargill Building downtown on Douglas, like Douglas and Rock Island-ish. They have the physical location there for their students to come on campus and get support.
And those other ones that you were mentioning, they can be, when they're going to finish a credit or something, they can do that in their school? You were talking about thirty thirty hours.
Yeah, the learning centers are in their high school, so at South or at East or at, and so there's typically a a teacher who facilitates a learning center class every hour with about thirty seats available for kids to come in and work in their learning center class that hour, and they fill that learning center up all day long.
And I think you said the ELO, that is also at their high school.
Yeah, ELO is also at their high school.
Yeah, that's who I was wondering. Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Awesome presentation. I was I was blessed to be at their graduation and see the success and the accomplishments and the pride that the families and those students achieved. I think we've all had achievements that we're excited about. Okay, so I have questions here. How different are these, the umbrella of Chester Lewis? How different is that from getting a GED?
Oh, exceptionally different. They're earning a high school diploma.
So a GED is a GED. It is not a high school diploma. Okay, somebody on on the outside world asked me that. Okay. What is the definition of a dropout? You had said that that we try to go out and get these students. And so how long do they have to be like not attending school before they're considered a dropout?
So they have to go through the truancy process. So there are specific protocols related to truancy and not showing up, and we've got to tell you you're truant and then give you an opportunity to respond and then refer you to the DA because you're truant. But there is a point where we said, okay, you've stopped coming to school, so we're gonna, we, one, we try to find where you went, because if we can find out, oh, Timmy went to, he Timmy moved to Texas, that's why he hasn't been showing up, then we can, instead of exiting Timmy whereabouts unknown, we can exit Timmy to a school outside of Kansas. But when we have, we can't, we can't figure out where you went, we have to exit you whereabouts unknown. So those students count as dropouts, if you will, because we we have no way to know what happened to them. So we can't figure out, did they graduate, did they not graduate? And they could, some of them have graduated. We just don't know where they went. It's just, it's a mystery. And then there's other students who actually complete the disclaimer process and fill out the paperwork to say, I'm dropping out, I'm disclaiming.
So once they've dropped out, can they still return to one of these schools?
Yes.
Okay, and here's another question. You had mentioned IEPs. If there is a student that was expelled from a two-five-nine school, can they enter into one of these?
If they're expelled, they stay expelled until the terms of their expulsion letter are up. And then once the terms of their expulsion letter are up, then options are back on the table.
Okay. You mentioned that ESAR funds supported this. What will happen in 2024 when the ESAR funds are no longer coming in?
We have conversations and meetings on the books to start talking about what does our post-ESAR world look like. And so those are going to be coming up, and part of our conversation with this is we need data to tell our story. So we need to know what's working and what's not working, and not just anecdotally, but we need to know data so that we can say, this is a program we have to keep. So what are we going to sacrifice to keep this program? Or you know what? This program with ESAR dollars didn't lend itself to the expectations or the results that we thought it would, and so we can go ahead and, you know, take that one off the table to leave some of these other things on the table. It is going to be not that pleasant of an experience, right? Because we have a lot of things that we funded with ESAR dollars, but it's going to have to be an open and honest dialogue about which which of these are really getting us bottom-line results and which ones aren't.
And I hate to keep bringing up COVID. But those two years were detrimental to the district as well as the nation. Do you think that our increase in numbers is due to the fact that they were academically behind because of COVID? And do you think those numbers will decrease once we've kind of like come out of that COVID depression, you could say?
I I would say yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've seen a lot of that. They've seen a decrease in enrollment since that has occurred to. Students, we're just trying to get them back in school and engaged again, but they did, like that population that she was that you were talking about, we did have students that fell quite a bit behind during the pandemic, and we are trying to play catch-up. And so hopefully, we will get through that, and we won't see as many students that we're having to recover credit.
And I know this is for the older student, but is there anything like this for our elementary students? Or do you think we can grab them when they're that young still?
No, we we don't, we don't have any programs like that, but it's a it's a little bit different too. Because when you're talking about high school, they're receiving actual credit to graduate, and so.
And just one more question.
It's a little different situation.
This is a national phenomenon, isn't it?
Correct.
And how do we compare with the other cities that are involved in this program?
Similar.
If you're specifically for.
WAA.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm sorry. WAA.
I don't have access to data for any of the other Acceleration Academy programs throughout the country, but I can tell you they are in like Miami-Dade Public Schools, Las Vegas Public Schools. So there's some other large urban districts that are also using an Acceleration Academy.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Stan?
Thank you for the presentation. Quick, couple quick questions. I think I'm understanding what determines when a student goes to Education Imagine Academy and the Gateway Alternative Program and the Sowers. What is the determining factor that sends a student to Chester?
Space is part of it. You know, what, you know, what do they have the capacity to serve? But really, it's students who, at this point, do not have the capacity to graduate from their base school because they're so far behind. And so Chester Lewis's myriad of programs, we can find, between Chester Lewis's myriad of programs and Acceleration Academy, we can find the one that best matches what your academic transcript says and what you need to graduate. So it's really dependent on the kid and and what they need. But yeah, it's it's basically saying, like, when I had to refer students to Chester Lewis when I was a high school assistant principal, it was very much like, I need you to understand there is no way you can grad, it's mathematically impossible for you to graduate from your base school because you're so far behind, but I still believe you can earn a diploma, so let's go find a way for you to do that. And that's what Chester Lewis is for.
And I understood that you were saying that it's if it's rough math, that the twelve-point-three percent, the impact on graduation rate, twelve-point-three percent, that gets us up to about eighty, that gets us up to what we graduated this last previous year, and I'm assuming we're going to be fairly close to that again this year. The longer these programs are in place, do you, are you optimistic that we could get up to eighty-five percent? And this is just kind of a warning that there's a lot of talk that graduation rates don't mean much, but I really think it's critical that we keep this as one of our goals. This is a speech for our next strategic plan. You'll hear me say this many times. Because I think what we're doing, and it's taken a lot of effort, and it's taken a lot of effort by our teachers to deal with everything from behavior problems to IEPs, but that effort to get up from seventy percent to eighty percent, that didn't just happen. That happened because of programs like this, and then we have to think, and then if we have to start in the future funding these type of academies in order to keep our graduation rates high after the ESAR dollars are over, then we have to ask ourselves, is the graduation rate still one of our top goals? And I I'm going to come down in the camp that it is one of the, I think it should stay one of our top goals because it's giving kids a chance, it's giving them a fighting chance to say they got to a finish line. And it may mean a lot of heartburn for administrators and for teachers and for parents and for the schools themselves.
And future school boards.
And future school boards, but it's a goal that if we step away from that goal, whether you feel that graduations are important or not, if we step away from that goal, then we are going to face the consequence, we're going to face consequences of. we are going to face the consequence, we're going to face consequences of lower graduation rates down the road. So I guess my question is, is there hope that once these programs mature even further, that we could see even a greater impact on graduation rates?
Dr. Thompson, it looks like she was going to say something, so I'll let her go first.
Well, well, I was going to actually address a couple of things that you've mentioned. Graduation rates, and that is exactly why we did Graduate Plus, because we hear people say, you graduate and you just graduating people just to be graduating people, and that was not a true statement, but we also wanted to put some meat to that, to the bones. And what we've done is we've built an infrastructure to support kids, all kids to graduate, and not only do we have an infrastructure for that, we actually have them leave with market value assets, which means that our students can graduate, they will have the skill sets to go off and get a job, because they will have credentials or tools that they could take with them to go directly to the workforce, or they will have the skills that they would need to be able to go on, on a college track. And that is exactly what the strategic plan called for when we first started this journey. It was always a college-going, 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 and it was very clear in our feedback from our community that they wanted two tracks for kids. They wanted them to be able to get credentials and go off and make a good living for themselves or to go to college, and we've built those infrastructures to support both of those. So it is critical that we have kids that graduate, but it's also critical that they graduate with something that they can take with them that will help them as they move and matriculate forward. So that's, that's the answer to that particular question. And I don't, what was your question? Because that's what I thought maybe I missed your question. Is that it?
No, you confirmed. What I'm hoping is that these programs, as they mature, would raise our graduation rates even higher.
They, they will, and what we're, what we don't want to do is to just depend upon these programs graduating our kids. This is, this is alternative ways, and it's a lot of different ways that we need to have in place for our kids, because some kids, they don't want to go to those big comprehensive high schools, because that's overwhelming for them. So we have to have choices, and again, you said you wanted to be the district and the region for choices. That's exactly what you're offering, is a variety of ways to be able to meet your goals. So absolutely, you will continue to see the graduation rate continue to increase, because you've now built a strong infrastructure with all of the alternative programs, you have comprehensive programs, you have a variety of ways to meet the needs of children who need a variety of ways in order to be successful and meet their goals. So the answer is yes.
And I think this is imperative that this board understands that if this continues to be a goal, which I think it should be and it will be, I think our, when we go out and do our next strategic plan, I'm hoping our public will tell us to stay the course on that, especially if we're talking about Graduation Plus. But I think we, the board has to understand that there's going to be a couple of big decisions down the road. One is summer school. I think what we did last year at summer school was immensely successful, but I think we can't let off the gas on that, and that's going to take some money, and then I think we're also going to have to look at the fact that the funding that we have for alternatives schools may not be as available, so we're going to have to see if we can make a commitment that ourselves. And then the last thing I had was just, I think Kathy started to mention it, was I think we're also going to have to start thinking about more alternatives for elementary too, because some of the behavior issues that we are seeing are starting so early that a lot of, we're stressing a lot of alternatives for high school, but I think we're going to also have to look at alternatives for elementary school as well.
And I'm just going to mention.
And I know we have some.
And I'm just going to mention that alternative education is extremely expensive.
Yes.
The per pupil amount for these type of programs definitely supersede what, what we receive for those students, so I just want to make that clear too. So even as you are thinking about alternatives or even adding alternative, even more alternative ways, it does come with a hefty price tag.
And that was a better way of saying it than I said about, we're going to have some tough budget decisions to make, because if the goal is to get, give kids a fighting chance and to graduate, it's going to take some resources, it's going to take some alternative efforts, because just opening our doors, we could probably graduate 70%. I mean, 68 to 78, we could probably graduate, depending on the year, but to actually start really making a difference, 80% and higher, that's going to take an extra effort from, from this school board and from this community.
And extra dollars.
That's what I meant by extra effort by the community. Thanks, Cheryl.
All right. Hazel?
Thank you for your presentation. I have a simple question. How much time does it take for each student approximately to acquire the credits?
I think it varies per student in each program. So like we were talking about Wichita Acceleration Academy, you know, they're doing one credit at a time, and it's the effort that the kids want to put into it, because a lot of it's self-paced in these programs, and so it's, it's such an individual accomplishment.
How about in the summertime?
The summertime, we have, how many weeks?
Yeah, we, we only give them an opportunity to, in summer school, they can earn a maximum of 1.0 credits, because they could earn a half a credit in the morning and a half a credit in the afternoon. So the max they can earn in summer school is one. Regular summer school, they could also recover some of their ELO credits if they qualified for a class for ELO, because ELO starts before regular summer school. But summer school in and of itself, the max they can earn is one in the summer.
So are.
And it's one month, right?
It's three weeks.
It's three weeks, yeah.
So are we sure that they're getting everything that they need for every subject? Are they getting it through the accelerated program? Are they getting everything that they would need to progress, you know?
Are you referring to standards or the subject?
Yeah, standards.
The standards, yes, because that's part of, that's a requirement for graduation. So for, to earn a credit, there are specific standards that have to be met in order to do that.
And they have to take a test? No?
No, they don't take like, you don't take a test to earn a, I mean, you might take a final exam, but you don't necessarily take a test to earn an English four credit, but the job of the, of the credentialed and accredited English four teacher is to know the standards of the English four course and to make sure that you are instructed on and have mastered those standards in order to receive a passing grade to earn the credit.
So you use the example.
They could demonstrate their mastery in different ways, not just by a test.
So you use the example of a freshman failing and having to go back and take, so if they take this recovery class as a, go back and take it, when they finish with it, are they prepared for the next level, is what I guess I'm asking?
Yes, it's the exact same standards that they need to cover in a non-recovery original credit course.
But in a quick, a quicker pace?
Right.
Yes, depending, depending on the situation.
For a lot of these courses, for example, instead of getting it face-to-face with a teacher, they're doing it through a program, a computerized program, so they can kind of go at their pace, not at the pace of what the teacher's doing in the classroom.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Diane?
Actually, I just found the answer to my question. So thank you guys for your presentation. Thank you for the information. I was just more curious on the capacity for the Gateway Alternative, since that is for a placement for behavior issues, and on your nice little chart here, you showed me that there is a 70, 70, 70 students can be in that.
Yeah, they, so they, and they, remember, they have grades six through 12. So really, it is about equivalent to 10 per grade level, since they do have seven grade levels in that building, because they have middle school and high school.
Okay.
And so it's really 70 students. One, it's an old elementary school, so it's, when you put big bodies in small spaces, it gets pretty tight pretty fast. And due to the nature of why students are there, there needs to be some extra procedures in place, and so to be able to do that, you can't have massive amounts of students running around or you've lost the structure that you needed, which is why the students are there.
Is that school always at capacity?
It ebbs and flows throughout the, you know, the beginning, in August, no, because it's August, but there are peak times of year, usually once we get through October and the rest of the year, it's, it's staying pretty full.
All right, thank you guys very much.
You're welcome. Okay, I see no other questions. I have one question, and that is kind of reinforcing what's already been said around the table. I'm really glad that you're looking at which one of these programs are really important for us to keep and which ones maybe we have to do away with if funding gets cut, because we do know we're going to get, lose the ESER dollars, and we have no idea what's going to happen with the other funding. So for us to put a structure in place now to begin to collect data is critical for us to make decisions a year or two years down the road. So thank you for doing that. Dr. Thompson?
And I just want to make sure too, that we, this is another reason why it's important for us to have a presence in Topeka, because when they start talking about at-risk dollars that are for students that are considered at risk, this is where you spend your money and pay for these specific programs. So if they begin fiddling with the at-risk dollars and there's a sunset that's come up on these dollars, and we need to pay attention to that, because if that, those dollars become, or are less, then we're going, that's where these programs come from. So please make sure we're paying attention, and then if we can have the opportunity to go down and advocate for something, it would be to save our at-risk dollars, because that's what gets you these programs.
The, the second thing that I wanted to say was that I am so thankful that we have these kinds of programs for our students. You know, our kids are dealing with lots of things that have nothing to do with school, and by providing them an opportunity to have a different kind of setting, we are literally preparing them for the future to be able to move on and do whatever they want to do, because without a high school diploma, you are forever locked into minimum wage kinds of positions, unfortunately, in today's world. So I am very pleased to see this number of programs and how well they're working, and thank you for your hard work. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, next item?
Next item, executive session.
Diane?
I move the board recess into executive session to discuss district commercial practices with the board's legal counsel pursuant to the exception for matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, and the meeting will resume in this room at, what, 8:23?
8:25.
We'll just do 8:25.
Second.
There is a motion on the floor to adjourn to executive session. Would you please cast your, it was made by Diane and seconded by Stan. Please cast your ballot. We are in executive session. We'll be back at 8:25. We are back from executive session. No action was taken. Next item?
Next item, consent.
Starting with Kathy, is there anything you'd like to pull?
I have none.
Okay. Julie?
Nothing to pull.
Diane?
I don't have anything to pull.
I have nothing to pull. Stan?
Under miscellaneous E7, the demographic enrollment and building capacity study.
E7?
E7.
Okay. Ernestine?
I'd like A1 and E5.
Okay. Hazel?
I have nothing to pull.
All right. Why don't we start with A1, since that's the first in?
Don't we want to move to pass the rest of the?
Yes, I'm sorry, let's move to accept.
I'll make, yeah, I'll make a motion to accept everything in the consent agenda other than these that have been.
E7, A1, and E5.
Second.
It was moved by Julie and seconded by Stan that we accept the other items in the consent agenda. Please cast your vote. Motion passes 7-0. Now, let's begin with A1. Ernestine?
This, I'd like to ask for Superintendent to explain to us, there are certain services, apparently, that the Wichita School District, that us, provides for some of the title schools that are, that are non-public, like the Catholic dioceses. Could, could explain what it is that we provide for them?
I didn't see my colleague standing there, and he's ready to answer, so therefore he can go ahead and answer that one.
Good evening. Sean Hudson, Chief Human Resources Officer. What Ms. Crable is referring to is that due to the Title I program that we have in Wichita Public Schools, our school district provides certain title services to the diocesan schools throughout the city of Wichita, and therefore, we do have some par educators and teachers that actually perform dual-role relationships. They do work in our buildings, and then they are also spending part of their day in diocesan schools that are part of that title funding.
Is it primarily for special ed or is it other things too?
Some things could be special ed, but I, I don't know until I look at the full report on how they've been categorized, but I look to that and I say, no, probably a variety of things.
Okay, thank you.
And we have done this forever. It's federal mandate.
Correct.
Okay, do you want to make a motion?
I move that we accept A1 under the consent agenda. Second.
Okay, it was moved by Ernestine and seconded by Julie, that we, to vote on this, please cast your vote. Motion passes 7-0. E5, Ernestine?
Yes. This is the one that I, about, we're contemplating selling a school that is on 11th Street, and I wondered if it could be, what could be mentioned, Superintendent, about selling, it's a building that's been closed for about 12 years, and we've been spending money to just try to keep it safe.
That is, that is correct. And so we are looking to sell this particular property on 11th Street, and I will look at Dan and see if I'm saying this correct. Right now, what this property that we're selling, and I know that the gentleman came up and talked about single-family units, and that is, I mean, I don't know what the, the people that are going to purchase it, they'll have to worry about that zoning, because they are exactly right. They're single-family homes, and that's what we actually, that they have talked and said that they were interested in using. Now, if they wanted to do multiple units for home, multiple family unit homes, they would have to go to the city and get that rezoned in order for them to be able to do that, because as it sits today, exactly what they said, it's for single-family homes.
And so if anybody didn't want it to be other than single-family, if anyone did not want to have apartments in that area, for example, they would be able to speak to the city about the rezoning, but as of now, the zoning is single-family only, and that's all that can be done with that property when it's, when we sell it. Whether they destroy the, or take off the, the school and just use the land, or whether they use the school, that's still that.
That is correct, and the only way they can adjust that, from what legal has shared with us, is that they would have to go in and get that rezoned.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to make a motion?
I move that we accept E5 of our consent agenda. Second.
It was moved by Ernestine and seconded by Julie that we accept this agenda item. Please cast your vote. Kathy, are you going to vote?
She did.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Motion passes 7-0. Next item is E7. Stan?
Thank you, Cheryl. I just pulled this because I would like Dr. Thompson to kind of refresh the public's memory on what we decided on November 7th of 2022, and what we are actually, what the overall goal is for this demographic enrollment and building utilization study.
My wonderful colleague is available at the podium, Mr. Fabian Almendares.
Good afternoon, Fabian Almendares, Division Director of Operations. Again, this is a follow-up to the November 7th presentation that we presented to you in regards to enrollment tra- in regards to enrollment trends in our district. We've seen some significant declines in our student enrollment and we also have seen some challenging situations with what we had to address at Southeast High School for enrollment and then concerns about growth in the Northeast portion of the city. This particular study would allow us to have kind of that crystal ball where the demographics would come in, they'd create the formula, and they would give us projections into the future so we understand what each of our boundaries looks like moving forward. It also allows us to reexamine our capacities to make sure that those functional capacities are accurate. In a, so this potentially could be the catalyst to us moving forward with a boundary change depending on what those, what the results of that study gives us. So again, this is the first step for us to be able to plan into the longer-term future for our school system by refreshing this information. In the aftermath of COVID, we feel comfortable enough that our enrollment trends have stabilized enough for us to be able to conduct the study and receive some useful information that we knew, need for our longer-term planning for, for our district.
What's the timeframe of, of this study now?
The, the vendor that we have, Davis Demographics, is a part of this, has quoted us about four months to get the study complete. So we can anticipate having a report to you sometime this summer. And again, that initial report then will provide those, those capacity figures as well as projections into the future. And then we can make decisions about where to head after that, once we have the data on hand.
Thank you. I just wanted the public to get, kind of get a refresh along with the board on what direction we're heading in this area. I move that we adopt C7 on the consent agenda.
I second it.
I think that's E7, isn't it?
I'm sorry. You're right.
Okay. So there was a motion by Stan to adopt E7?
E7, yes.
I second it.
And seconded by Ernestine. Please cast your vote. Motion passes seven zero. Next item. Patrick?
Next item, under operations, BSN Under Armour Athletic Agreement.
All right. So I have a team here that is coming to discuss an athletic uniform agreement. This particular piece has, was conducted, some work with our secondary schools whom use uniforms for athletic activities such as tennis or football, soccer. And so there's, they'll be able to give a thorough report on what the current existing state is and how we would like to move forward and why we would like to move forward with this. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to my colleagues to, to begin the conversation.
Good evening, President Logan, Vice President Albert, Dr. Thompson, BOE members. Tonight, we are here to talk about a project that has really been in the makings for even pre-me arriving to this position. We've been exploring the, the possibility to transition into some sort of a uniform rotation process. The arrival of Dr. Caleb Stoppel, who's with us today, our, our new athletics director, kind of spawned a new era of exploration for this. And so he's been working with Jonathan Wees, our supply chain director, who are both here tonight to develop this, this process and really go through the negotiation pieces. Creating this rotation schedule benefits our system because it really does create a consistent rotation, which ensures that every single student in our district, regardless of what school you attend, has access to quality uniforms on a regular rotation basis. Tonight, again, they're, they're the real experts. Last time I didn't do such a good job of explaining, they'll be able to give, walk you through all the details. And really the highlights of this, that we'll not only talk about the contract and give you some of the contract specifics, but also our financial incentives and kind of, we can, we can process and then move forward from here. Like anything else, and I will say this, this, this program will allow us to truly leverage our buying power, our purchasing power as a large school district and be able to put it under a single brand, to be able to get incentives that we have not been able to receive in the past that's going to allow us to benefit our school and also have a positive impact on our, on our finances. Again, we, we must align under a single brand and that comes with its share of challenges. We've, again, everyone has their own preferences in terms of brands. But they'll walk you through how we settled on this and then we'll have an opportunity to answer any questions. So with that said, I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Stoppel and John Wees, who will walk us through this.
All right. Good evening. Thank you, Fabian. My name is Caleb Stoppel. I'm the Director of Athletics here for WPS. First, I'd like to open up with a background of how we are able to furnish and meet the need when it comes to the athletic uniforms that I'm sure you've all seen at one time or the other when you've gone out to a WPS sporting event. We're very proud of the athletic uniforms that our students get to wear, get to take advantage of, and they feel proud in what they have as well. Currently, we do not have or take advantage of a district uniform rotation. What we do have is uniforms that are provided and chosen at the building level. We have uniform rotations that currently exist at each of the high schools. And this details what sports are replaced, on what schedule, what sports may rely upon the parents to purchase those uniforms, and what sports the kids typically buy their uniform for. So this currently exists at all of our high schools, but we do not have a common, consistent athletic district rotation. And so as we've noted here on the screen right now, some of the things that happen at the buildings on some inconsistent levels, but we do provide uniforms is, some schools may choose to purchase home jerseys one year and then away jerseys in another year. Best practice may have that we provide the whole uniform when we provide new, which would include both the home and the away uniform. Sometimes some schools, if they're able, and sometimes what allows them to purchase some of the extras are booster clubs or some other fundraising efforts. And these extras may include backpacks to carry their equipment around. It may include warm-up pants, jackets, those type of things. That's not consistent right now at all schools because right now, that's not funded from the district level. That's usually provided through extra means like fundraising. Right now, some schools are able to receive some incentives for the uniforms that we provide as a school district, but not all schools are receiving incentives. And so incentives look like anything from free apparel that comes back in incentive money. And like I said, right now, we have schools that receive zero and we have some schools that do receive some incentives. And so as Fabian mentioned before, the purpose of talking about a district uniform rotation is talking about leveraging our financial resources. And that is something right now, we are not doing to its fullest as we have some schools that are not able to reap the benefits of leveraging those resources. So let's talk a little bit more about why a uniform rotation. We talked a lot about leveraging those financial resources. When we have money to spend and we have uniforms, the most minimum requirement for athletes to have to proudly represent their school on the playing field and stage, we have an obligation to meet the need and provide those uniforms, which we are doing right now. But we're not leveraging that financial resource in terms of receiving incentive back. An additional piece of leveraging that is also receiving marketing and promotion benefit. Things that you might see right now happening at all of our schools at various levels where it, it might be signage out on that campus. It might be signage within the buildings. But that is the marketing and promotion piece that is not consistent at buildings, but our buildings do the best with what they have to be able to be proud and promote the spirit capacity of their school. With this uniform rotation, it would provide uniforms to JV and varsity teams. Typically, these are juniors and seniors, but could include freshmen and sophomore at those teams. But this uniform rotation would provide uniform replacement every four years for those JV and varsity teams, all sports, at all schools. After four years, those uniforms would move from the JV varsity and they would move down to what's called sub varsity, which is typically your freshman and sophomore. So in a uniform rotation, we would expect to get a lifespan of eight years out of the products that we are using our financial resources for so that we can, again, meet the need and give our students very adequate and high-quality uniforms.
Good evening. I'm Jonathan Wees. I'm the supply chain director for the district. So as mentioned before, we had tried to take this direction once before, about five or six years ago when I was a part of that project. The primary reason why we ended up not carrying forward with it was that we couldn't fit, we couldn't meet the legal requirements per state statute for purchasing. In this situation, we were able to find a company, a distributor, that's under a cooperative agreement. Cooperative agreements are national, state, or local-level agreements that we can purchase on and are actually an exemption from state statute. So this allows us to select what we need under that agreement without actually going through the bid process, which is almost necessary, would definitely be necessary for what would end up being an exclusive contract with a specific supplier and a specific brand. So the Omni Partners contract, which BSN happens to have the contract for that, they represent both, or two of the three major brands, Nike and Under Armour. They've got multiple distribution sites, very large distribution sites throughout the country. And there's three major brands. They do not represent Adidas. Adidas specifically chooses not to be under cooperative agreements and work alone. So we worked with BSN, who on our behalf went to the two brands that we had the opportunity to work with under the cooperative agreement and worked to get proposals from each of those brands. Those proposals have different aspects to it. The primary part of this contract is intended toward the varsity athletics programs in high schools. So under the high school program with athletic sports, you get several different aspects to this agreement, one being upfront money for product allotments, rebate money for purchases that we make, marketing packages, and a special discount for different types of items. Under our middle school program, which actually includes our high schools that don't have varsity athletic programs, you do still get a marketing package. It's considerably smaller than the varsity programs, but you also get rebate money for any purchases you make through BSN and special discounts for the same types of items that are in the varsity program. Then the elementary schools even get something out of this, which is a slightly smaller marketing package, rebate money for purchases, and special discounts. So these proposals actually encompass our entire district. All of our schools can get some value out of this, out of this contract. To determine who we wanted to go through between Nike and Under Armour, we went through a selection process. We've already kind of discussed the proposals, but we had to sit down and analyze the different aspects, aspects of it, what we would be getting in, in terms of upfront money, which is guaranteed, versus rebate money and what other possible incentives we could get out of it. Looked at both of the proposals, pulled it together, and went to do presentations between the two primary brands and did those presentations for principals, athletic directors, and some of the district leadership. Once those proposals, or those presentations were over, we did a feedback request with the principals and ADs, did some additional negotiation with BSN. And once we had everything pulled together as tight as we could, we did, we offered a recommendation to the district leadership team for a BSN and Under Armour agreement. So what things went into selecting Under Armour? Really, the, the biggest thing was product availability and production. The, the lead times involved in Under Armour product were considerably better than what came with Nike. And during those presentations, the, the reps for both of those companies actually told us just as much. They, they were very honest with us. Under Armour told us what theirs were. Nike admitted that they were behind that schedule. In terms of customer service and just looking at the presentations alone, we had a very strong presentation from Under Armour, admittedly not as strong from Nike. And just the vision of the partnership based on the reps that we have, the enthusiasm of the rep with Under Armour, all of the different things that went into what would be a good partnership and program was just overall stronger with Under Armour. And then there's something that I'd like Dr. Stoppel to, to speak about, being the Women of Will program, giving you a better idea of what that is.
Yeah. So something that caught our immediate attention and is worth mentioning tonight to you, that Under Armour talked extensively about and Nike did not, is a program called Women of Will. And basically, it is very strong and important to Under Armour in their mission and vision to take on the importance of the female athlete. In, in this business, when it comes to athletic apparel, a lot of companies, to fit the athletic, the female athlete, will have their unisex sizes and will simply offer you the small sizes. So they will say, well, you need a lot of extra smalls and smalls, but it is the same unisex that a lot of the male counterparts are wearing. Under Armour is not that. They intentionally have a program that says, we cater to the female athlete. All of our female sizes are truly designed for the female body type in mind. Not only that, but the Women of Will program comes with a lot of promotion and educational pieces, which is some backdrops and some tablecloths, but it truly promotes and lifts the value of girls in sports. And I think that's very, very strong and something that I've noticed already that USD 259 takes very proudly. And I listened and heard immediately the difference between the two presentations because this is Under Armour's mission and vision. Not only do they want to help support and promote female athletics, but they, they really want to cater to all of our students. And they talked about meeting the need of the team of the athlete.
Thank you. Then finally, the other thing that we reviewed was the total difference in incentives. The two programs had one distinct difference. Both of them had backing from BSN that was equal. Then one of them had a total package of upfront incentives with additional rebates that were included. The other, Nike, had one line that was based, was 100% based on us spending money and rebates, which actually reduced it a little bit. We'll get back down into the specifics on that. First, what does the contract actually mean for us? First off, it's yearly mutually agreeable renewals for up to five years, meaning that both parties have to agree to continue to move on through the contract. There's no, excuse me. There, there's nothing that will happen if we decide in year one or year three that we don't lose, we don't owe anything back, nothing like that. It will strictly be that the incentives later on down in the contract, we won't get those. We can still purchase product. We can still continue on the way that we, we are. And same goes with BSN. Should they decide that it's not a good contract, they can say, hey, this isn't working out for us and we need to terminate. Realistically, all we're saying is that during the course of this contract, it'll be exclusivity to Under Armour and BSN in our purchases. There are several things that aren't included in this contract. Shoes are very specific to the individual, so that is not included in this. Injury, injury prevention equipment, like helmets and shoulder pads. And realistically, our only real requirement is to offer BSN an opportunity to quote larger equipment purchases. We don't have to select them if somebody else has the better price, which any company you look at, they've got their very well-priced items, then they've got others that they actually make money on. So we have the ability to quote that. We'll look at what the best price is and make the best decision for the district on that equipment. There are no minimum purchase requirements involved in this contract. It's very much, we, we, just like the program that Dr. Stoppel referred to, we, we want to follow that program because that's what's going to be best for our students. But it's going to be dependent on, upon, it's going to be dependent upon the budget that we have at each year. So we have the flexibility to purchase as we need to.
Can, can you explain what happens? Let's just say, three years down the road, we run into some opportu, times where we'll have to do budget cuts, right? So how does this fit in with that?
How does the program or the contract?
The contract. Will we, will we be held responsible for continuing to buy? I mean, what is that? I mean, how does this, how do we keep ourselves from being in a situation where we get into a contract with them and then down the road, three years or so, we, we have budget cuts? What is, what does that mean? What does, what does that mean?
Well, it would just reduce the number of purchases that we would make over that time. And, and it really comes down to, each of us are going to have our own pain tolerance on the different aspects that we hold important in this contract. So if we did get down to where we just didn't make any purchases, they may make the decision to terminate this contract. But we don't have anything that we would owe back, and all that would come down to is, we wouldn't get the incentives in later years in the contract. Does that answer your question, ma'am?
Yeah, we've worked, we've worked very strategically with our legal counsel to make sure that this contract, and I've pushed back on certain items. So again, there is no minimum purchase requirement, meaning there's no minimum spend that we must adhere to over, over the next few years. Obviously, this was built based on the rotation schedule, but we understand, especially with Esser, there's been a lot of discussions around Esser today, going away in a few years, that we might find ourselves in a situation where we might be cutting certain things. And again, this, this, this contract does not tie us to spending a certain amount of money over the next few years.
So whenever we look at the estimated financial incentives that come along with this contract, each of these is five, or one of the five years with each of the different situations we could be looking at. The first and lower bar is what our current situation is. We're really only getting about an average of $3,500 per year, per school, and some schools aren't getting any incentive dollars. The middle bar, the red one, is what we would get through Under Armour. And the green one would be what we would get through Nike. Each of those years, and it's a very front-loaded contract, the intent is for us to be able to start beefing up our branding throughout the district, and, and get us a good running head start on this contract, and, and really getting the pride into our schools, and really heading in the right direction. Next, we look at what the cost incentives are, or cost versus incentives are. And over on the left graph, that's looking at purchasing all the uniforms needy, needed in one school. So all the varsity level uniforms needed in one school, Under Armour versus Nike. So Under Armour actually is a little bit higher than what Nike is. It's about $3,600 higher for a full contingent of uniforms. But whenever you look at the incentives over the entire life of the contract, the difference between Under Armour and Nike is actually $45,000. And that's $45,000 per school. So the, the offset difference, about $41,000 of the incentives versus the cost of the uniforms, is pretty significant. So we've mentioned, oh, sorry, ma'am.
I was waiting till the end of the presentation.
I just had a question for right then. Quite clarification. The difference in the incentives, you're meaning the incentives that, that we get?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Between Nike and Under Armour?
Yes.
Would you state it again then?
Yes, yes. This is a difference in, in fact, I should say it this way. This is a difference in upfront money that we get for both, or what we would get, should we go with Under Armour, or what we would get if we had gone with Nike, if we had recommended Nike?
And the difference is how much?
$45,000. Yes. So we've mentioned the marketing packages several times. That's included in the first year of the contract. $15,000 goes to each high school with a varsity program. There are just multiple different things. What they'll get is a credit for $15,000, and they'll be able to go down and select from different items that are available, like, like flags for out on the, or on the light poles, doormats, window clings, just a whole lot of different items that can help just really promote their school. Things that we probably wouldn't purchase on our own. This is really big and additional to help start branding our, our district, and really kind of showing off. Next, we, we mentioned that the elementary, middle schools, and the high schools without a varsity program actually get a marketing package as well. This marketing package comes up to about $128,000 over the whole district. Basically, for the middle schools and high schools without a varsity team, they get a custom tablecloth and a media backdrop. And elementary schools get the media backdrop. So they've got a little bit of additional down there, even at those, those levels, starting to kind of branch this out throughout our entire district. So just to do a quick recap of what our primary benefits are here, we can add a lot of consistency to our purchases and still make sure that they're legal. This includes a, a lot of incentives that support the uniform purchase rotation, and we've got that big marketing package that helps to support the schools and the sport pride at every school.
Again, this recommendation is not being made lightly. We've worked, not only from a negotiation standpoint, but also with our legal department to ensure that we are doing what's best for our system. Again, in, this really does benefit us in terms of K-12. And it really does boil down in some ways to preference as a part of this. Again, we want to leverage the purchasing power of us as a large school system, and that's really what this does. But like everything else, we know that our schools and our athletic directors also have their own preferences in terms of brands. No difference than I, as I was talking to Ms. Stabler earlier today about clothes, I have a preference for Puma. I love Puma shoes. But if I'm able to get a family deal for my family to get Puma shoe, or to get a different brand of shoes for my entire family at a fraction of the cost, that's going to benefit our entire family, that made me, made me think twice about my, my Puma preference in some ways. And really, that's kind of where we are right now, is if we're going to leverage our purchasing power as a school system, doing it under a single brand is, is the way to go. And this is not just you need to, which taught, other school districts in the region have done this. And other larger school districts like Tulsa have also moved in this direction also. And so just know, again, a lot of research has gone into this. But as we make this recommendation, and I will clarify too, that this recommendation, that million dollar amount, because we're so used to seeing these approval come in as expenditures, you're assuming that a million dollars is purchasing, but it's not. The million dollars is actually incentives that the district would be getting out of, out of this piece. So it's backwards than what we're, what we're usually seeing. So it's important to note that too, because when you see that million dollars, you're like, oh, I thought you said we weren't committed to anything. But no, that's really what the district would be getting back as a part of this program.
We do have some questions. Hazel?
Yes, thank you. My question is, how many schools, you were talking about schools that have leverage and schools that don't. Of our high schools, how many of our schools have no leverage? And how many have leverage now?
It's, it's not necessarily about who has the leverage, it's whether they're using it. As we pull together, as we're using ourselves as a district, that's how we're using our leverage.
Okay, and then you're talking about incentives. How are the incentives measured? And how much do we have to spend to start receiving the incentives?
We don't have to spend anything right at this point. Of course, the expectation would be that we would purchase uniforms and equipment.
So without spending anything, we're going to get $1 million in?
That is upfront cash, guaranteed.
Guaranteed, okay. All right, thank you.
Kathy?
Thank you, gentlemen. So we've approved uniforms, and this is also for Fabian, last month for our band, okay, district-wide. And I'm sure that we'll approve for, for this presentation. Who, who takes care of our cheerleaders and our dancers?
That's something that I am investigating and researching, that I want to take on. Our athletic directors, our activity directors at the building, even though many of their titles may say just athletic directors, a lot of them, on their email, it actually says athletics and activities. And so that's something that I am working with them to figure out what we can do, what I can do, to service those activity programs, just the same as our athletics.
Could the incentives be used for our cheerleading and dancing uniforms?
So truth be told, and feel free to chime in, but BSN is actually part of even a larger family. And Varsity Cheer is another company, that is a sister company of BSN, that sits under Varsity Brands. And they are the company that the majority, if not all, because I'm still researching this, of our high school cheer and drill programs use when they buy their cheer equipment and their cheer uniforms. And so something that is, hasn't been as aggressive as this work now, because we have athletic needs we're looking to right now, we have a side conversation, working with those cheer coaches, working with the ADs, to determine how are we purchasing cheer and drill uniforms? And how can we leverage that financial resource? Because there is a hope, and what the research is showing, that we can look at an agreement on that end too, where we can reap incentives. Because BSN does not sell the cheer and drill products, that's why they're Varsity Cheer, but they're in the same family. So we talk about leveraging a lot, because it's the same corporation.
And perhaps this could be the same kind of a contract with the incentives that you're proposing to us tonight for cheerleading and dance. I'd be very interested to hear your findings.
Yes, thank you.
Stan?
I'm not going to restrict, if anybody else has questions, but just to keep the conversation moving, I'd like to move that we approve the agreement with BSN and Under Armour to provide varsity athletic uniforms.
I'll second that. Okay, we do have a motion on the floor, but we'll continue discussion. Diane?
Can you let us know that the current age of some of our school uniforms, and where we're at in that stage? I know we don't have a standardized process, but an estimate of the current age of most of our uniforms for varsity sports?
It varies. However, our buildings, and due to the work of our athletic directors, have maintained a building-level athletic uniform rotation, and so that we are following best practice to the best we can, in that we don't have old uniforms. I can't quite quantify what old is and not old, because right now, the system trusts the buildings to maintain that, make sure that they are replacing on a natural timeline. The natural timeline that we have, and I have created with the AD's help, a district rotation is four years, and then another four years, so we're, we're looking at a lifespan of eight years on an item that we purchase. I would say that is comparable to what the buildings currently operate. But as I mentioned before, there's, there's a few anomalies, where some schools only buy a home jersey one year, and then they wait a couple more years, and they buy it away. And so the lifespan of that whole piece may be approaching five, six, seven years old, but they're replacing half of the uniform at a time, instead of replacing all of it. We have some sports that replace it every year, and they do that at the parent's expense. And that is something that I think is agreeable at that school and that program. And so they replace it annually in that case.
Can you also talk to the benefits at the school level? Like the high school athletic director, we're talking about money that the district gets back. But I would like you to speak on what the athletic directors are looking at for their individual school, because you see a million dollars up there, and that's, that's a very large number. And can you break that down more for us, so we can understand what that actually means?
Yes, I'd love to. Thank you for that question. Let me get to my notes, so I can give you individual. So when we talk about the district receiving this total finite that we went back to earlier, yes, this slide right here. In year one, that red bar graph is $47,000. And that includes the $15,000 of marketing. So when we subtract those two, we have an amount that essentially the athletic director at that high school will be in charge of, working with our sales rep from BSN, to determine what products they want to buy with free money, so that the purpose of this apparel, this free apparel, is to show appreciation to our staff, to our coaches. The uniforms are what we're purchasing for the kids, and, and that's pretty clear, I think, and obvious. The free apparel is for our coaches. In fact, some might call that a coach's uniform. These are our, our staff members on the front lines, these are our teachers out on the playing field. And sometimes we have situations happening right now, where booster clubs are helping get them some apparel that they can feel proud in. Sometimes we have coaches dipping into their own pockets right now. And so an incentive, a really celebration of this opportunity, is being able to go to that coach in the beginning of the year. A lot of our ADs have school-wide, welcome back, all coaches there, let's talk about some things. And handing that coach a stack, a bag of five, six, seven apparel items, with the school logo proudly and quality done, saying, coach, thanks for all you do for our kids. Here's some coaching items for you this year. I mean, as an AD, that I've seen that with coaches, as a coach that's had that done to me, as, as we know with our teachers, sometimes just a simple thank you, and by the way, here's one thing, is going to mean the world. And, and we have, I would, I would say, as we compare to other districts in our state, and even in our region, these figures are by and large upwards of three times more than other schools receive to outfit and have incentives for our coaches. This is a huge win for our staff.
What kind of freedom and flexibility do the athletic directors have for that money?
They, they have ultimate flexibility. There are items that obviously have to be Under Armour, and have to come from the BSN catalog. But short of that, it's really at their discretion. This is not something that will come from much direction from myself, except for this money is earmarked for our coaches. As I explained, coaching uniforms is really how we feel that we are being responsible of these items we are giving the coach. But if they happen to leave and go on to another job, we say, coach, we'd like those items back, because that's something that is going to stay in the school district. We're not gifting these things. And so to your question, the ADs, they may decide to use the majority of their money to buy a larger bulk item. Maybe a warm winter coat costs $200. Or they may decide to spend the money on several $50 items, so they can get four or five of those, as opposed to one large ticket item. But I love to trust the ADs who know their coaches to do what they need to do to show important appreciation for their people.
And work with their building principals also.
Yes.
And we talked about an online store for the merchandise for each individual school. Can you expand on that?
Yeah, so one of the opportunities, but it is language in this agreement and contract that would be a requirement of this, is that every varsity sport, and really, it doesn't end there, but that's the requirement, is every varsity sport has the opportunity to build a comprehensive digital spirit store through BSN. And so just as you've probably seen online, whether it's with colleges, whether it's with other schools at the high school level, this allows quality product that is either at the Under Armour level, or at we, what we call some sub-level brands that aren't Under Armour, or Adidas, or Nike, but Russell and Badger, more affordable items. We offer a spectrum of items to our community that has that school logo on there, with the sport name perhaps, if that's how it's designed, so they can purchase that, it gets delivered to them, and now they have spirit wear to wear to those games. And so that's an opportunity, because now other schools can take advantage of that, whether it is activities, whether it is chess club. I mean, the options are really endless. If a school wants to pursue this, we can provide the opportunity now. And now our community is able to wear the colors of that school, the logo, when we look in the stands and we see even more than we already have. But we have this seamless online digital platform to be able to provide that to our stakeholders.
Would all schools have access to that, or would just the high school varsity sports-type schools?
Excellent question. All schools would. Elementary, middle, and high school, yes.
And when, I know some of the incentives are front money, and some of the incentives are rebate money. So obviously, that front money would come in the beginning. So I guess, when would this contract start, if it's adopted?
So upon approval, A of all, we need to order uniforms for the fall. And that's why last month, we came and asked for money to do that, because we have our orders ready, because we have to do that now to meet some ordering production guidelines, so we have that ready. BSN, in our negotiations and conversations, we've already made the request that if this is able to occur, we've already had spending occur with BSN up to this point. In fact, starting in June or July of, of this current year. And they have met our need and request to honor all of those purchases to be included in our district spending level. The district spending level represents how much we're spending with them. It could be from the uniforms that we're going to buy. It could be through all of the balls. We, we use a lot of athletic balls, footballs, basketballs. We use wrestling mat tape, we buy a lot of equipment. And with our purchasing comes leverage on that purchases. And so in tracking all of that, we are already... And so in tracking all of that, we are already accumulating that total spend towards rebate. We, in the agreement, there is a ceiling of when we hit X amount of money, ten percent of that money will come back in rebate and that is across the entire district. And so at our middle school level, that could look like a principal deciding that they need P E equipment and they have a building fund to purchase P E equipment and they know we're in this new deal now. And they say, "I think I'll look at what B S N offers." And now, middle schools are allowable to receive that rebate back for the budget they have. Same with elementary schools, obviously the same with high schools.
I forgot my next question, but it'll come back. So this would make Wichita Public Schools an entire district of Under Armour. Would there be any options for any schools that would want to opt out to have a different brand?
With our pursuit right now, no. Because the collective bargaining we have in this agreement is all seven schools or what we have on the table is no longer on the table. And we would have to pursue individual conversations, which could mean this school is interested and maybe these three schools are interested. But the money significantly decreases if we don't have all school, all seven schools. And I think that the percentage is upwards of sixty to seventy percent of that a million dollars of incentive is decreased and because we lose that capacity of that leverage.
Okay. And I think this, I think this is my last question. Even with this contract, B S N sells equipment. But could we still go out to bid for different types of equipment to make sure that they've got the best price for us?
Yes, that's the only requirement of the contract, is that we allow them an opportunity to quote or bid, which is something that we would do naturally anyway. But if somebody else comes back with a better price, we have every right to go and purchase the better priced item.
Okay, we just have to have a bid from them?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. As I have been studying this, it comes down to, and tell me if I'm wrong, I think this is an equity issue around our district. Because we currently have some buildings that have more frequent rotations, they buy a better quality product, they... But this would give equity in our products and equity in our timeframe of when they get new products across our whole district. It also would, the age of the uniforms, we know that every four years, we're going to be rotating out and they'll be on a schedule of this one rotates out this year, this one does next year. But not all of our buildings do that now. They all rotate out, but they don't all rotate out in the same timeline. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And it also, for equity, is the, the, the uniforms are different. There's different brands. We have several different brands that different schools are using, different quality, because it's what they can afford. This gives all of them a quality product, correct?
That's correct.
And for finance, it's the incentives. You know, a million dollars looks great, but you want to look below the surface. And below the surface, it's, we're leveraging our buying power. And we also are really looking at our finances long-term with our purchasing. We're going to be able to track our, how much we're spending on athletics in a whole different kind of way than what we're doing now. Is that?
Yes, very much correct.
Yeah. I know that lots of big school districts do this, even smaller districts, but big districts get more incentive, obviously. And I am very much in favor of it. Because I think it's the right thing to do for all of our kids in the district. And, and everybody will adjust to whatever. You know, if they're wearing something else, they'll still, if they're on a team and all of them have the same uniform, they'll be fine. Okay, we do have a motion on the floor and I see no other discussion, so I will call for us to vote on the motion. The motion was made by Stan and it was seconded by Julie that we accept this, the recommendation, and move on with the contract with Under Armour and B S N. So please cast your vote. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you all very much.
Next item?
Next item, under miscellaneous, superintendent's report.
I'm gonna be very quick. We're moving into a very busy spring semester in the Wichita Public Schools. And I'd like to remind everyone, if you're interested in a magnet school, N A Magnet School, the deadline for the elementary magnet is five o'clock this Friday on February seventeenth. So please adhere to that timeline of getting your application turned in for the next school term. Also, I'd like for you to mark on your calendars for next Tuesday, February twenty-first. At six P M., our all-city fifth-grade honors choir will perform at Century Two Convention Hall, so we hope that you will join us there. And then at seven thirty, at the same location, all of our, all-city middle and high school honors choirs will take the stage at Century Two Concert Hall. So please join us for that as well. The Excellence in Public Service Award program is, nominations are open. What that, Fabiana Manderas, is he still here? Fabian received the award last year. She represented us and he was an awesome representative. This is awarded to people in our school district and the city and the county who are dedicated public servants in our school district as well as in our community. And so we have an opportunity to celebrate. So we always nominate someone from the Wichita Public Schools and then we pick someone and then they are awarded this wonderful award. So please, if you have anyone, you can go to www.usd259.org and you can find it there to be able to nominate someone that you feel is worthy of the honor. The last and final thing is on February twenty-eighth, it is testing day for high school juniors. So if your student tells you freshman or sophomore or senior and they tell you that they don't have school on the twenty-eighth, believe them this time. Just this time only, believe them. They will be taking the A C T and going to school to take that A C T. So make sure that you pay attention and believe your students this time. I thought I'd help you out, students, in case your parents don't believe you because you've not been honest before. So I got your back. All right. So we've gotten off to a great start this spring and I look forward to continuing to move through the semester and getting close to my most favorite time of the year and that is our graduations. So we are moving closer to that mark of graduation and we're really excited about the opportunity to see our children walk across that stage. It's always such a cool deal. Complete my report, thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item, Board of Education report and requests.
Okay. Hazel?
I had, I've had a busy month. I was able to attend the K A S B Behavior Workshop in Topeka. It was very informative, information on legal procedures for student behaviors and it was very informative. With the redistricting of the board members, school districts, I acquired some new schools. And so I've been visiting my schools. Franklin Elementary is one of them. One thing that I noticed at Franklin is that they celebrate all their students with, they have trees in the hall with the kids' names. Everybody in the school is in there and anybody that gets a sticker, it's a huge celebration. So they celebrate all of their students. Washington Elementary is another school that I acquired. I noticed that they, it's a very quaint school and it has a lot of community participation and support. Cloud Elementary. I was able to go to P V E to the first grade class that I volunteered at, wrapping gifts where they had a, where they were raising money for the Humane Society. And they raised a hundred and fifteen dollars and that money went to a surgery for a dog named River Monster. He had, and he had his surgery. He had to have a leg amputated and he was adopted after that. So it was a sweet story. Allison, I went to Allison Magnet. Allison is the only pure magnet school in our district and they were recently named Magnet School of Distinction by Magnet Schools of America. So we should be very proud of that. Woodland Elementary is a magnet school with a focus on health and wellness. They also celebrate their students' progress and personal goals. I attended the Eastern Kansas Scholastic Awards Exhibition at Mark Arts. The Alliance of Youth Artists and Writers' mission is to identify students, grade seven to twelve, with exceptional artistic talent. And the exhibition is open through March twenty-fifth and I'm very proud to say that I actually was a juror for that. I had no idea the schools that I was looking at. I viewed photos for about three hours. So hundreds and hundreds and it was very rewarding to go and look at the exhibits and see how many of our students actually participated and actually won awards. I was privileged to attend a robotics tournament hosted by Allison Magnet. There were eleven schools with forty teams competing. I had no idea what robotics, but what it entailed is very impressive. I still didn't understand how they score points, but I know that the students worked very hard, very detailed in their, in their robots. And that's all.
Ernestine?
I can't compete with that.
Okay, Stan?
Thank you. I'd also like to thank all the schools and the programs that I visited this last month. I'm always amazed at how welcoming they are and I always learn something at every single one of those visits. I also just wanted to remind the board to get your list in on graduation. I think we still have some high schools. We were supposed to pick one comprehensive high school and one special or alternative school and I think there were still a few gaps the last time I looked at the list. So you might go back and look on your email or Dr. Thompson, who would they contact? Or maybe Patrick knows or?
Well, we'll just, what we'll do is keep things in order. We'll get it to Patrick and then if they would contact Patrick to make sure that they have met the obligation for what you assigned them, which was one comprehensive and one alternative.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I think as I looked at that list, there's only one school that doesn't have someone on it.
Okay, was it down to one? Last time I looked at it, there was several.
Yeah, but we still send it out to all of us. Patrick, if you would, please?
I will do that this Wednesday.
Okay. I've visited several schools and we've had our honors choir, not choirs, honors band and orchestra present, this last week or I believe it was this last week. And it's amazing, our kids are so wonderful. Just for the board, I have updated our committee assignments and you should have received that on your table tonight. So be sure and look at it and make sure that you're in agreement and okay with the committees you've been assigned to. I tried not to change very much, but a few changes did happen. So please look at that. Diane?
I had my board report typed out and it's in the printer. So I usually forget most of the stuff anyways. But I went and had a meeting with our elementary ed curriculum specialist to see how the implementation of letters training is going with our elementary students. And it was a very interesting conversation and very enlightening. It was very enjoyable. So I just want to say thank you to Dr. Thompson for all of the work that you've done. That's a very behind-the-scenes initiative. And I think our colleges have failed our teachers in not teaching this. And so that's put the burden on us as a public school system to spend millions of dollars to train our teachers to teach kids how to read, which is foundational to their educational outcomes. And so I just want to, I just want to thank you personally for taking that initiative on and making sure that that is implemented throughout our district. And I feel very good and confident about the curriculum that we have for reading. And I'm gonna go through some kindergarten classes to see how it's implemented with her. And so I was very excited to learn more about the curriculum that we're doing. So thank you. We have excellent curriculum, so thank you. I also went to Topeka for the K A S B Student Discipline Workshop with Hazel and just to hear more about the legal issues and some of the constraints that we have in dealing with student discipline issues. And so that's an ongoing conversation that we're having. And then I also toured Mueller Aerospace Engineering and Discovery Magnet. And Principal Tara Parton took me around the school, brought me into a bunch of classrooms and was able to look at some of the, some of the things that they offer in their school, talk about some of the strengths, some of the areas that we have for improvement. And so those will be further conversations to have about that school. So it was, it was very, very fun month, so that's it.
Julie?
No request or report tonight, thank you.
Kathy?
I met with the Y E P group as we've, we've already talked about a little bit. And I learned about the additional efforts, as you heard tonight, that they are campaigning to educate our students, our family and our community on that fatal drug that's in our community. I also toured the Future Ready Center and was just really quite impressed. It was just flabbergasted with it. I was able to actually dialogue with some of the students that were in there and they actually showed me some of the stuff that they were working on and they want to be there. I mean, they want to be there. So that was, that was neat. I watched some of our two-five-nine students perform in the Wichita Children's Dance Festival at Wichita State University. I read to the fifth-grade students at Benton Elementary and had a good time with that. And as Dr. Hatfield said, I did attend the Accelerated Academy Open House and then it followed up with the graduation and I got to celebrate in their achievements. I attended the Kansas Day Celebration by visiting and attending the Chili fundraiser for the McCormick School Museum, where I was able to read about some of our original founders of the city of Wichita and their stories and where they came from. So it was a fun month for me also. I do have two requests. The first one is, actually I've got three more things. Someone from Peterson Elementary reached out to me and they want to know what is immunization exclusion day twice in a school year? Who approved that? Is that normal to have two exclusion of immunizations per year? Maybe Dr. Thompson, can you help me with that?
That is something that I'll have to ask Kimber about. I'm not sure exactly what the laws are and they change every five minutes, so I don't want to repeat something that's not accurate. So I will double check to see if there has been any adjustments to the immunization.
Great. Yeah, they had reached out to me and wanted to know, can you find out what this is?
Sure, sure, we'll find out.
Another thing too, is I was gonna bring this up, but I understand that it was already brought to the district's attention and that is the oversight of the twenty-three, no, the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar with the parent-teacher conferences that are going through Valentine's Day and Ash Wednesday of next year. And Dr. Thompson, I think you're already working on that and I just wanted to...
It's done.
It's done?
We've already made the adjustments.
Okay, so for those who've reached out to me, it's done. Okay, very good. And the third request I do have is, could I get some data reflecting how many students has left the district in the last four years to attend private schools? And out of that data, how many have returned to U S D two-five-nine? That's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Stan?
Kathy, I just have a quick question on that last request. What, state the question again, what the question is?
Data reflecting how many students, two-five-nine students, have left the district in the past four years to attend somewhere else in the Wichita area or even in a different district? And out of that data, how many have returned to U S D two-five-nine?
Is this a specific problem you're looking into?
Why do you ask?
No, I, because I, we have a policy, that seems like a lot of data to try to gather. And so, and we have that policy about two hours limit on, I'm just, I'm trying to get to what the root of the question actually is.
I want to know. Okay, curious minds want to know.
What I would like to do is, is take your request and then work with the superintendent...
Sure. Sure.
-to see how readily available, because oftentimes, we do not know that a student has moved one place or the other, but we just need, I need to work with Dr. Thompson and figure it out.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
And then, we'll make a determination, if it's going to be highly intensive, then we'll bring it back to the board for the vote.
And that's the only thing I was trying to avoid is-
Thank you, Madam President.
-anything that, that would make it highly intensive on time.
Yeah. Yeah, if you could just give us that, and then I'll work with Dr. Thompson, we'll figure it out. Okay. I see nothing else, next item?
Next item, new business?
I'm not seeing any around the table? Next item?
Cheryl.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say that I hope-
I hope that when we get the extra stuff that comes with the athletic equipment, that our people that wear it can look as cool as Wendy Johnson does in-
(laughing).
Would, stand up, please.
Stand up, please.
We want, we wanna have some stuff like that for Eastside, Northside, Southside, that's as cool as your athletic equipment stuff. That's all, thank you.
Thanks, Ernestine. Next item?
Next item after new business is executive session.
Diane?
I moved the board recess into executive session to consider an, an interview applications for the superintendent's position pursuant to the non-elected personnel matter exception under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, and the open meeting will resume in this room at ten fifteen? Okay, ten fifteen. Do I hear a second for that? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Diane made the motion, Stan seconded that we move into executive session. Please cast your vote.
I was concentrating on yours.
We have six yeses and one abstention, so we are in executive session. What is this? It was moved by Stan and seconded by Diane that we adjourn the meeting. Please cast your ballot. Oops, wait a minute, we're not quite ready. Stan and, Diane.
Yeah, Diane did, yeah. Julie's not in there.
She's mixing up.
Has anybody ever said no?
I hope not.
Cheryl will be the person to ask.
Okay.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero, thank you very much.